Call to order the regularly scheduled planning board meeting for the city of Hendersonville. Monday, August the eighth, two thousand twenty-two. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of minutes from the July the eleventh meeting, everybody's had a chance to look through those, I assume, can we have a motion? Move to approve, Mr. Glassman, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes from July eleventh have been approved. First item on our agenda is a presentation. An analysis of impediments to fair housing. Presentation and discussion. Mary Roderick, regional planner from Land of Sky. Counsel. Thank you.
Hi, that's loud, I don't have to bend over, do I can stand up, y'all can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Hey, hey, good to meet y'all. I've worked a lot with Lou and with John Connet on various CDBG grants, and that is why we are talking about this, so I'll get into that a little more in a moment. Turns out you have another agenda item today that actually fits right in with this, so Matt and I had not synced up, and as he was just looking through, it's like, oh, well, we're already thinking about these things. And one of the things I'm gonna kind of basically ask y'all before this document goes to commerce, I basically want your feedback as the planning board. Because I don't want to send anything on to the state where you're like, yeah, we're not interested in that at all, like, this is really the city's document. We have to create it for the city, so I'll go on and just kind of get into it. So fair housing planning. If you receive HUD funding, which right now the city has a CDBG NR grant, neighborhood revitalization grant, for the Ash Street Neighborhoods, Seventh Avenue, kind of use different names for it. It's a four-home rehab and a sidewalk. And if you have that money and you're over ten thousand in population, you're supposed to conduct what they call an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. And I'll tell you more about what that means. The last one, Land of Sky commissioned back in twenty twelve, covered the whole region. We were able to kind of, I shouldn't say this, get away with not doing a new one back in twenty seventeen because we were just within the five-year period when we got our CDBG NR grant for Gray Mill. So now we need one, that's why we're doing this, it's required, a requirement of the state. So, I've, on the left-hand side, kind of those bullets with the highlights are kind of what it's supposed to include. I'm gonna talk about the right-hand side first. So what they want to ensure is that there is not housing discrimination based on one of these seven protected classes. So race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or disability. So income and source of income are not protected in the seven protected classes. Some states do add that, like, and this is so people can't be discriminated against if they're trying to use a housing choice voucher, for example. Section eight, housing voucher. That is not protected in North Carolina, this is the standard set of protected classes in federal law. And so they want to make sure, you know, that people are not being discriminated against, so that's a big kind of focus of this. What came up in the last analysis of impediments, most people were just concerned about affordability. Well, that's not a, you know, income is not, you know, you can discriminate based on income as a landlord, that is, you're right. So, so it's hard to kind of disentangle those two concepts, you know, affordability versus all of these other things. And a few of the things that I'll talk about kind of brings them back together, I'll get there in a minute. But we're supposed to, and this is why we're gonna talk about some of the things that we're gonna talk about, we're supposed to look at the regulations and administrative policies of the jurisdiction. So things that the city of Hendersonville Planning Board zoning makes decisions about. And how those affect location, availability, and accessibility of housing, so, you know, zoning, how does it influence your housing? These public and private conditions that affect fair housing choice, that's more market-oriented on the private side. And then, you know, what kind of range of housing do you have? So it wants to, it really wants us to kind of look at a market analysis. I'll talk more about that. So we've had that market analysis done pretty recently with the Bowen study, if any of you are familiar with the Bowen report that was done, that Housing Needs Assessment. That was wrapped up in twenty twenty, he just did another eighteen, he did a four-county one, now he did an eight-county one. So some of the data that we have in the full report that I hope you've received a draft of combines information from both of those. I've just got a couple of bullet points, not gonna spend a lot of time on this, but just to kind of emphasize the point. For four, so I think we all know there's a shortage of housing, right? I think that's something y'all hear a lot. Okay, I don't have to spend a lot of time on that. But, you know, the second bullet point is that Henderson County has one of the lowest rates of availability at point six percent for cell housing. And that's across all, all types of housing, we're not just talking about, you know, affordable housing or workforce housing. Mortgage denial rates, that's another thing they ask about, and Scott, my colleague, who did some of the analysis for this, found there's a, you know, mortgage service that you can look at, and that people of color maybe anywhere from one point five to three times as likely to be denied a mortgage. And he doesn't get into why, because you have to analyze every application to understand that. But that's just kind of at face value, there is that much higher rate of denial. And if we look at homeownership rates, and this is for Henderson County, you know, people who are white are much more likely to own than rent, and basically every other race is more likely to rent than own, with the exception of people who are Asian. So, you know, that's just kind of laying, that there's no causality there, right? That's just kind of, this is how it is. And, you know, that, that, there's no statement there, there's no, you know, it doesn't mean there's discrimination, right? It just means, and what I'll say on track is one of the services that spends a lot of time with homeowner education and renter education to try to increase the success rates for mortgages for people of color. That's not something that the cities, you know, has any decision-making ever, so I'm just including kind of this broad information because the state wants to see that in the report, it's what's in the report. But I think that housing availability is probably the most kind of interesting to the planning board. Rental housing supply in Henderson County, Bowen looked at thirty-five multifamily housing projects, and only in the market rate, there was a ninety-six percent occupancy rate. Everything else is a hundred percent, tax credit, government subsidized, combination tax credit, and then just government subsidized, all one hundred percent occupied. Now, there was only one in that combination, and I don't know a lot about that category, but basically just saying, there's not a lot of vacancy. Right, we know that. So cost burden, again, this is from the report, that, that, of the kind of four housing, main housing issues that HUD defines that cost burden, both for renters, it's higher for renters than owner-occupied, but forty-six point eight percent of renters are considered cost burden, spending more than a third of their income. And those that are severe cost burdens, pretty high too, eighteen point seven percent, so again, you all know all this, this is the really, this is the me. So my, my colleague Scott, because he had done your one sixty D analysis, I asked him to share Scott Adams to, to look at this for me, and he said, you know, here are a few things he's seen in the zoning code that may be limits, at least on the amount of housing, right? Because the idea is if you can increase the amount of housing, you also increase the amount of choice for housing. That's not necessarily true, but, you know, there's the ideas, increase the supply, and there's more options for people. So one of the things he noted was on the, and I apologize for all the text, I've got a couple of pictures to illustrate some of these ideas. That ADUs, there's only one allowed per lot, which is pretty standard, I'd say. I did not ask him for precedents where this is different in other communities, I would be interested in knowing that before any decisions are made. Right, like, well, what's, what are some alternatives? We haven't researched that. You can only have one ADU, makes sense, pretty reasonable, pretty standard, I think. And that right now they can only be up to eight hundred square feet, which is, could be two bedrooms. If it were twelve hundred square foot, which is about the size of my house, no longer really feels like an ADU at that point, but you know, his point being, you know, you could potentially increase that size of an ADU or allow multiple ADUs if the lot is a bigger lot, that's the kind of bold text there for performance zoning. And potentially increase housing supply, now, in the Bowen study, you'll find that in his survey, people weren't that interested in ADUs as a tool, right? They wanted to see some other tools, like revitalization, rehabilitation, more mixed use, more kind of higher densities. The ADUs were not like the preferred solution to increasing housing supply. Accessory dwelling units, not, not the best way to get more bang for the buck, but it's in here in our discussion, I'm gonna see if it's gonna stay in here or if we're gonna take this out completely, right? This is a question, if y'all are like, we are not changing our ADU standards, we're not interested in that, this is probably gonna come back out of this report. Because I really don't want to put something out for public consumption, then that goes to Department of Commerce, that the city says, yeah, we're not interested in that at all. We've already thought about it, we like our ADU standards, we're gonna keep them, so that's a point of discussion, we'll come back. Multifamily attached housing is not permitted in any of the residential-only districts, and that includes the R six high-density residential district, and I believe that's the later agenda item that Matt is gonna be talking with y'all about, some change maybe to that. So it sounds like y'all have already been discussing this, at least. And the, the third thing that, that Scott found was that manufactured homes are not permitted by right in any, in any of the by right zoning districts. So there's one PMH Plan Manufactured Housing Development Conditional Zoning District, and that's one five-point-two-five acre site. And I'm, I'm not here to have a discussion about the benefits or negatives of manufactured housing, that's basically just an observation. I know Buncombe County, but it's county, not city, and there are differences in how counties and cities do things. Buncombe County has increased, for example, the number of districts that manufactured housing is allowed in because it increases housing availability. But that is, I haven't done the additional analysis in terms of like, well, what does that mean for a city? And city of Hendersonville in particular. It's just, these are just observations out of your zoning. So manufacturer homes are very limited to that one five-point acre site. Potentially could be another way to increase affordable housing. And by increasing affordable housing, you then, this is where I said you bring the affordability conversation back to choice, you then possibly increase choice. So this is going, I mean, I wanted to go backwards for a second, so on this middle point, this is probably the most, he did a couple of diagrams, I just wanted to show y'all these. That duplexes and multifamily, this was, well, it's actually a different point, sorry, this was the fourth point. Three bullet points, this is number four, I just moved it to this slide. That duplexes and multifamily require a larger minimum lot size than single-family detached homes. And he shows, the black outline is a standard single-family, the dotted dashed is a duplex. And he shows that there is potentially enough buildable area on a single-family lot, so that you don't necessarily have to have a larger lot size, potentially allowing, and again, this is, this will require some analysis to see, you know, well, how many, how many, how many developers have been limited by this, right? Like, we don't know, I, I wouldn't, certainly wouldn't start making changes or suggesting changes until you've done some discussions with the development community, would, if they were able to build duplexes on a smaller lot size, would there be more duplexes? I don't know. Scott's assessment is that it's possible to put a duplex on a single-family lot and does not have to have that extra five thousand square feet that's right now required, right? So that's all he's showing here, it's, it's really a point of question and discussion. And I don't know, you know, again, that would be a conversation with the development community, as well as obviously internally first, as to whether or not that would increase the number of duplexes that are built. This is just another representation of that, where he's showing kind of what the duplex and a three-D would look like on a single-family lot versus on that fifteen thousand square foot lot that's required now. So, um, here's the, the discussion part, you know, we've got that missing middle graphic down there, you know, I think we're not quite to maybe the mid-rise level, Asheville's starting to do more of that. But there are a lot of housing typologies between single-family detached and high-rise. And, and we've seen that there is interest in it on the market side. You know, on the production side, there aren't as many of these things, and I know Matt said this is a conversation that y'all have been having, so you know, something to consider is, you know, and I've kind of changed the order of these. Would minimum lot size changes be of value, would it increase production? Again, that's something you would, you know, question, are you interested in considering that? The ADU number and size changes, I, I'm on the fence about that, I was like, twelve hundred square foot ADU, that's a really big accessory dwelling. But, you know, maybe it's something that could be done, or communities are doing, I don't know. And then these multifamily and manufactured housing zoning changes, it sounds like that's something that's already on your agenda. And then my question to you, any other options that y'all have been considering to increase housing supply and housing diversity? So that's really then the, the discussion point.
And, and so I would just, to kind of reiterate what Mary was going through there, if there were elements in those four points that, you know, there was general unanimous clarity on not wanting to continue a conversation about those, then we wouldn't want to put them in the report.
That's right.
And we would want to know that, and then kind of beyond that, really what we're committing to do is continue a conversation on each of those and to explore, you know, a little further on all of those, and, and I think they do touch on a number of topics that certainly staff have talked about, and I think I've heard some of the planning board members talk about in various different meetings, and it gotten some questions and things about that, so we think there's, you know, sensible reasons to explore those, and then I think that the fourth thing, sort of setting those aside, would be, is there anything else that's, you know, burning a hole in your pocket that you want to make sure that we are highlighting that would help us address access to housing in Henderson, Hendersonville and moving forward?
Well said, Lou. I like working with Lou.
Go ahead, John.
I don't have a mic, so I'll lean for this. One of your slides, Lou said that duplexes are not allowed by right in the residential zoning districts. If I read that accurately, I don't believe that's accurate.
Multifamily attached housing, which I mean, is a dup, is that not a duplex, or y'all define that differently? Okay, okay.
Okay, so duplexes are allowed, right, that's my understanding, so I'll make it clear on, and what is multifamily duplex?
Yeah, multifamily is, in our zoning ordinance is, three units and above, any kind of attached housing where three units and above are, are, are together, so a fourplex or a triplex are not permitted in any of our base residential zoning district.
And, yeah, so that could be something like that, even that courtyard apartment, where the, yeah, the triplex, fourplex, what Lou was just saying, which from the envelope can still feel like a sing, courtyard might be a little much, a big single-family house.
Well, and, and I would note, and we've talked about this before, but, I mean, we have that model of residential in some of our residential zoning districts. We've got, you know, courtyard apartments, triplexes. You know, that, that model exists in our, and were built primarily in the twenties, yeah, a hundred years ago. But, you know, when, when we've had those come up in the past, we've noted that there are examples of it currently within some of those residential zoning districts, so just a a, a different version that currently requires a conditional rezoning if you're in a, any of our base zoned residential districts.
I think just recognizing that, that zoning has been an impediment to, to people obtaining housing is, is a, is a stark. And we were all provided with a, an article, a recent article, and hopefully everybody read it, and that's, that's what this discussion really is all about. I, can you give me a little more clarity, there was a slide that had an acronym that I didn't quite understand, but I don't know if it was the city of Hendersonville or Henderson County, the acronym was M O E.
Margin of error.
Margin of error.
Was that, yes, sorry. Yes, that's just, that's, that's the margin of error, so, so.
Well-balanced community.
So that's.
Availability rates are between two and three percent, where'd you say Hendersonville was?
Point six.
Point six.
So, lower than that availability rate for four-cell housing. This second bullet of, that's Bowen's most recent study that he just wrapped up in twenty twenty-two, early, I believe it was wrapped up in early twenty twenty-two. Years flying by. The eighteen-county study in Burt County and McDowell County had lower rates of housing availability, but only those two lower than Henderson County, so basically y'all are in the top three of no housing available. Yeah. Yes, ma'am, and that's county, that's countywide, so, sorry.
That's a concern, are they for rent or sale? Or whatever?
We, we don't regulate that in terms of zoning. So duplex is what we do, what we permit would be the duplex, what someone does with the duplex, whether they own it or rent it, currently is not regulated by us, and there are limitations, obviously, in terms of ownership and what we can do, if the question is about short-term rentals and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
There are, there are currently nothing on the books for us as it relates to regulating Airbnbs, there's been some recent case law. It's a rabbit hole that we could go down that doesn't, while it does have an impact, I think, on housing availability, I would want to, want us to focus just on, yeah, yeah, do we think that multifamily and residential is a something that we want to explore further, you know, would duplexes on smaller lots be okay? Those kinds of questions, we can spend plenty of time talking Airbnb.
That still gets back to ultimate issue, the higher the density, more bodies, more cars, more traffic, more infrastructure issues that you have. So what we have now seems to work pretty good, and we still got, we have a problem.
Right.
It's a density problem right now.
Well, and that's where the transportation piece, mobility becomes a component of having more bike path infrastructure. As soon as the people can use that infrastructure, right, that they are capable of, of biking or using pedestrian.
But they don't, and our age, our age demographics in this city and this county are older.
Right.
Nashville, we don't have a hundred bike paths everywhere, we've got the Acroster Trail coming.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's stuff to use, but people really don't use it, it's a very small slice of the pie that uses that stuff.
Right, it is, that's a culture shift, I mean, this isn't Denmark, it's not Amsterdam, right? I've Germany, I've all those places I've lived, they're very dense and they're pretty much, if you drive a car, you're kind of crazy, because it's.
This is the United States, we drive cars.
Right, I know, I do, I drive a car.
Particularly if you're older, you know, a lot of our population.
Yeah, so that's a good point about the, the traffic generation and, and how to look at that concurrency.
There are issues with the zoning in, in the city and in the county that need to be tweaked. They don't need to be heavily modified to allow super-high-density housing, they just don't.
Yeah.
Because of the issues that we just talked about.
Yeah, I guess it would have to be somewhere where there's, it is highly walkable, like downtown, right? Like, the thirty-five apartments, that Gray Mill, I mean, I'm sure there's parking there too, people can drive, but let me get actually, because one of the impediments that you just reminded me. I did do a summary of impediments and recommendations and how these relate. And on the next slide, there's one about microtransit, I'm really curious, and I'm gonna talk to our NPO director about this, but but impediment number one, inadequate housing supply, both for sale and rental, so potentially reviewing zoning restrictions, like you said, Mr. Robertson, related to those minimum lot sizes of multifamily, so, you know, maybe a few more duplexes won't necessarily cause that much more traffic, right? But, I mean, we're not talking like giant multifamily. You know, maybe ADUs here or there, like whether or not we want to look at those, but that's, that first step is like reviewing, answering some of those questions I just had on the previous slide as a, as a way to increase housing production. And account for traffic increases, that's an important one. So, so inadequate housing supply, the second is inadequate housing, accessible housing options, so this is for people who have disabilities. And looking more at housing rehabilitation and providing incentives to developers to increase the number of accessible units and publicly funded housing developments, I mean, that's pretty standard anyway to do that. The third, lack of housing finance options, so that gets back to that mortgage denial rate. And looking at the available services for homeownership counseling, specifically targeting certain groups. And to see if their capacity and outreach can be increased. There is a down payment assistance program, for example, City of Asheville runs for low-income, moderate, and low-to-moderate income households. Is that something the city could consider if it was, you know, determined that that would be helpful? That, that's just, you know, a possibility. And then on this, this is my really last slide. Discrimination based on source of rental income and previous eviction history, this came out of my last discussion with stakeholders. A lot of the housing service providers were concerned about people being denied housing because of their previous eviction history, that it stays, that, you know, on your record for so long. And maybe we can review local and national research on best practices and strategies to help increase the number of landlords who participate in voucher programs. I have heard a gentleman talking just the other day about his horrible tenants and why he never wanted to do that again. You know, there's, there's two sides to the story, right, and understandable that landlords don't necessarily want to participate. Lack of transportation. I'm gonna have to grab my water bottle. I think this microtransit is an interesting option, especially for people who are low to moderate income or no longer driving for other reasons, because they're older and not comfortable with it. The city of Wilson has piloted this. They got rid of their fixed transit, and they're basically doing the Uber service through, but, that they pay for, instead of, so microtransit, so you call, you're like, I need a ride, you know, you have to have, like, I guess you get vouchers, you have to have a certain income threshold or need threshold to, to qualify for the service. But they're finally, they're gonna sell their buses, I guess, they've piloted it for two years and they feel like it's working. The system's being used well. Their buses were underutilized and costing them money. And so microtransit as a potential option is, you know, to, maybe it's not an either-or, it's an and, right?
How big is Wilson compared to Henderson?
That is a good question, I think Wilson's pretty small, it's up in Ash County, if it's the Wilson I'm thinking of. Maybe, thirteen thousand is the number, so, so, pretty similar, yeah, it's not, it's not in Asheville. I mean, it's a small community, that's a good question, though. And the last is, this is typical, this is kind of the standard de facto lack of awareness of fair housing laws, that just because there aren't a lot of fair housing complaints that go to the Human Resources Commission, doesn't mean there's not discrimination, it's just that people aren't aware of how to deal with it and what their rights are. And so this is a standard that we already have been doing, is putting out more publications about fair housing and fair housing choice. And, you know, what your rights are, and providing that, since there is a larger Spanish community in Henderson County, also providing that in Spanish. So that one's kind of a go-to, but, you know, the others really are kind of up to, up for discussion. Really.
If, if we already, you know, our single-family residential areas allow for duplexes.
Right.
By right, and if we already allow for an accessory dwelling unit up to eight hundred square.
Square feet, that's right.
If we wanted to perhaps get our, you know, legislative committee to look at changing some type of zoning to allow for more housing, where would be our best place to start? I mean, I mean, we can't, you know, you can't dive into everything all.
Right, sure. Sure, I'm wondering about the lot size, I mean, I, I think Scott's.
R six is our.
Yes, so this is an R ten.
Six thousand, that's our smallest lot, so.
This is the ten.
Our, our ten encompasses a lot more land, actually, our fifteen, I think it's maybe fifty percent of the city. So, understanding the amount that you would impact, if you're changing our fifteen, our ten, our six is a pretty small amount of real close into the city.
You think lot size would be a good, like, have the most impact?
I mean, I think it's fair to say, especially when it's sixty percent of your, of the zone, of the city's land.
You could potentially not require the extra square footage, minimum, extra minimum lot size for that duplex. Be one way to tackle it. Another way that I've heard, I hadn't heard tonight, is for smaller units, say, under a thousand square feet, it counts as half a unit in your, in your density calculation.
Ah, I like that.
There could be a wide variety of, of solutions to this problem if we wanted to look at them.
So, again, to try and, you can hear me trying.
Right, meta-level, yes.
At a very high level, is that something that we? At a very high level, is that something that we want to keep talking about? Because I, for, for this particular report, it's really just a, yes, this is something that we want to consider further. And I, I think that these are very valuable ones. I, I don't know that we couldn't have a conversation about, uh, you know, triplexes, quadplexes and lot size requirements associated with allowing those. Because at the end of the day, you still have all your setback requirements, you still have minimum lot size. It only works if it works. And at this point, you, what you're doing is reducing the amount of land, which is not inexpensive, required to put a particular unit count in.
An ADU can have a garage apartment above it, right?
It can, yeah, absolutely. So you could have a garage, and that's kind of, I think, the idea, but That's right.
Right now, right.
Apparently.
And so potentially, you could allow it if you wanted to, and that's, that's the question. I, but as Lou's saying, like, is there anything here where you're like, yeah, please don't put that in there? Because we don't want to have that, we don't want to have that conversation. And that might be, you know, like, is manufactured homes, since it's only allowed on one five-acre site, has that already been determined that the city is just, doesn't support that housing? I'm going to look at you, Lou, housing typology.
Yeah, I don't know that that conversation's been had at a very high level more recently. I, I may be speaking a little bit out of turn there, but
Okay.
I, I don't know that we've revisited plan manufacturing.
Well, especially since manufactured housing's changed so much, right? Like, they're so, I mean, pretty high-quality stuff out there now.
I was wondering if we should have different categories for manufactured housing and maybe definitions or something? Because you can't just group it all together.
Right, right, that's a good point. My husband was looking at this Lindol, speaking of that garage with an apartment on top, the prefab Lindol homes. And I'm like, that is really nice, it's nicer than my stick-built.
I have a lot of friends in that manufactured housing, and I'd love to see more of it here.
Okay.
Decently planned community.
But, like you said, with more differentiation, it's not, they're not all equal, right?
There are two, I mean, and I live, I used to own one, but there are two. One's eighteen units, the other one is sixty units. Manufactured housing, the majority is, and that's in the city limits.
Okay.
And there, it's all older units, really older units. And according to the powers that be, you can't replace it if it's vacant for six months or more, which is a good idea, because all that stuff needs to be bulldozed.
Right.
It's not, people live there and they, it gives them, you know, affordable housing, literally affordable housing. And, in fact, I don't know if you notice myself, but to add stuff to the, to the mix, when you're, when you're canceling what you've got, doesn't make sense.
Sure.
You, I don't care how new it is.
Well, yeah, and I don't know about that particular area.
Within the city limits.
Yeah, okay. And it, is it, is it a, is it a blight issue? You said it's degraded, or?
But it's, they're, they're pretty well taken care of.
Okay, well.
It's
But there's an effort to get rid of that existing.
If, if you don't replace the, a unit within six, six months, I think that's what it is, within six months, for whatever reason, somebody pulls it out or burns or whatever, then you cannot replace it, period, which is good.
Oh.
I don't think that's a bad idea, so.
Sounds like the, the biggest bang for our buck would be looking at our fifteen and manufactured housing. So, just to show, I don't think we need a motion, but maybe a show of hands to maybe direct staff
When you say manufactured, what exactly are you talking about?
Well, I don't know, I mean
Well, we just want to look into it, we're just saying that there's all kinds of manufactured housing now, but that's very, very different than what what that meant.
Right.
Yeah, different than the module, it is manufactured, but it is higher.
Yeah, okay. And that might be something like that, that distinction.
Yeah.
Modulators are allowed by, right?
Yeah.
Are they? Okay.
So we're not talking about modular.
Okay.
Manufactured.
Right, so that would be a, a case where there would have slides and this is this and this is that.
And then container homes.
Forty-foot
I want a container swimming pool, my husband showed me one of those, they look really nice.
Just a show of hands, um, you know, let, let's see if, if this board is in, in sync with what, what we're talking about here. Recognizing that, that zoning has been an impediment to housing, housing availability and affordability. And the fact that, you know, our biggest bang for our buck is taking a look at our fifteen, perhaps, and manufactured housing.
Okay.
Go ahead, John. Go ahead, John. You have something you want to say first?
Well, I'm slightly different topic, but over the years, many times, lot size has come to play and people have come for variances. And over these many years, and I'm going back a long time, we have determined, and I think without maps, of how many of the lots in the city do not meet the minimum size for their zoning district. I live in our fifteen, all right, my lot is seventy by seven. That's, I could get four of those in our fifteen. And it's not uncommon to, and so I think we need to look at not just our fifteen, but all of the city and try and bring lot size into compliance with what is really happening here.
Right, is that feasible? It is feasible, okay.
Yeah, we've actually looked at that area issue.
Overburdening staff with having to look at every
Well, so I think a lot of this is probably going to be a component of our comp plan review that RFP is out now. There's going to be zoning change recommendations, some of these we can go ahead and start taking on now. There's no specific, you must do this by
Right.
X date by doing this analysis. So this analysis is a component of what are we talking about? Uh, to address affordable housing and to address affordable, uh, housing availability within the community. I think these are all topics that we've started to, to look at. None of them are off the table. Certainly staff with the, uh, knock on wood, moderation of Czdszys that have been coming through the office have had a little more time to start to look at these things and I would hope continue to do so moving forward.
Let's just, let's just do the, the show of hands thing to make sure that this board is on, on track with what we're talking about here. So let's just raise your hand if you're interested in having staff looking at the fact that zoning is an impediment to the housing
All right.
numbers that we're seeing here that don't look very favorable.
All right.
That's pretty much unanimous, okay.
And you did receive, they did receive the draft document as well, the full document, if anyone wants to
He's in the packet. I can send that out, that may not have made it in the packet. I may have only done the, uh, cover sheet.
Okay, all right, so that, here's my contact information. But basically, the point being, I'm, I'm not going to submit this yet. It is going to go to council, though, at the next council meeting. We do have to get it to the state, like, as one of our five million documents that they need. So, you know, if, if any of you have any concerns about anything I've said today, you, by all means, reach out to me, there's my contact information, either via phone or email, okay?
Jim, is there any issue? Or does anyone have any issues about keeping the ADUs at, uh, eight hundred square feet?
Like, taking out that, that piece of that, the performance zone?
I think that could be looked at as well.
Yeah.
You want to look at that also?
Yeah, I don't have a problem keeping it in there. It's not, not my highest priority, I'm not this, but
Yeah.
I don't have a problem having it.
There's nothing binding in any of this.
No.
We can talk about different ideas, if you don't like the ideas, you don't have to move them.
That's right. I just didn't want to do, I don't want to put anything out, you know, out in the world where y'all are all like, absolutely not. We hate that idea, that, that's the main thing.
Skyscrapers.
Uh, yeah, no, we're not, yes. We need a skyscraper in every neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you, Mary.
Thank y'all for your time.
Okay, next on the agenda is committee assignments. We actually have a couple of new board members.
Do you want to do some introductions real quick with the new folks?
Laura Flores.
Yes, hello.
Hello, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
I live on Fourth Avenue, we're restoring another older historic home because we're absolutely nuts. It's a, it's a labor of love, though, so hopefully it'll be well worth it when we're finished. I'm a realtor, I have a small office here in town on Fourth as well. Um, so I'm happy to be here and participate and eager to learn and see how everything's done and
Awesome.
Thank you for having me.
Welcome.
Laura, you were a member of this board before?
I was not, I was on the Historic Preservation Council. Yeah.
And then Andrea Martin.
Yeah, I am a rare native, born at party, um, I love this town. So, um, I have a vested interest, obviously, as we all do. Um, and I own a cabinet flooring tile and countertop store. I just opened on Church Street across from the parking garage, so I get to watch that every day. And I, all the little children come and watch it for my customers, so it's a great babysitter. But, um, I'm just happy to be here.
Thank you, welcome. So, um, committees, committees meet pretty regularly, a lot of the discussion takes place there and it does help this meeting run a lot smoother if, if that discussion takes place in these committee meetings. So they're pretty important. Um, we currently have three committees that meet regularly. One is a long-range planning committee, um, that's getting, getting ready to crank up because we've got a, um, a new comprehensive plan for twenty forty-five, um, coming up. And we've got the legislative committee that looks at ordinances. And then we have the current planning committee, which meets prior to this meeting each month and that allows a few of us to be up to speed on what's on the agenda and have a little more information, helps this meeting go a little more smoothly. We currently have two folks on long range, four on legislative and three on current. So we, we'd like to get some committees assigned to the new folks. You can talk to me after the meeting if you'd like. You have anything you wanted to say, Matt, about committee assignment?
Well, so I've got you on all of them, so technically we have three on current. We have, you're correct, four on legislative and then long range, we, we have, uh, two. And that is where our most recent, recent vacancy
Brennan myself on
From Hunter, when he was on long range, so we do have, we, we really need a long range, a new member of the long range committee. And, um, there's, there's room in current planning as well. So four is really, three to four is comfortable. Size, so you have some good representation, but also kind of nimble. But also going to be some changes, real quickly, uh, to our meetings. There's changes at the state level, so our committee meetings will not have to be in person unless something, maybe it changes locally at some point. Uh, but for the time being, meetings are going to be in person, so we'll provide more information on that. That definitely takes out some of the nimbleness, uh, but, uh, we'll do the best we can.
So we're not going to be allowed to have Zoom committee meetings?
Not for, um, unless some changes
Yeah, so state adopted new legislation and with the end of the emergency order, um, at the state level, uh, it's not clear that, uh, committees or council or the boards have the authority to meet remotely. Um, we think that it's likely that the state legislature will adopt some clarifying language because it's going to impact, you know, cities across the state. But council, at their meeting last week, uh, moved to have everyone meet in person until that state legislation, um, hopefully moves forward to clarify how communities can host their
We can provide more information on it, as we know, there's lots of blogs that have been written on it. And, but right now, the direction from our leader, city leadership is that, until it gets ironed out further, whether it's a local
Meeting as well.
Yes.
Meeting as well is no longer a Zoom meeting?
Uh, after
So, the, the, the difference is, we, we can broadcast it on Zoom, but members of the board or the subcommittee cannot participate via Zoom.
What about public comment?
Public comment can still be accepted via Zoom.
Okay.
So any interest, uh, in any of those committees? Uh, or would you like to review them further to, uh, kind of figure out what your assignment is? Okay, there should have been information
Why don't we just talk after the meeting?
Yeah, okay. And everybody else is good with your current assignments? Okay, and we'll provide more information on meeting location and, and all that with those changes. And you guys take a look at the, the options you have and let us know which one, which one you'd be interested in and we'll get you assigned.
Nice question, which, I'm on legislative, so this is to Jim, Tamara and Barbara. Do you really find that the, uh, having the current planning committee immediately before this is a benefit? Or would it be better to have a break of, I don't know, a day, a week, whatever, to contemplate what goes on at that committee?
Honestly, I think because conditions, conditions are being discussed with the developer right up to the planning board meeting. I think it's very appropriate to have it right before this meeting. And, and it, it considers folks' times, doing, we're all volunteers. We're going to be here anyway at four o'clock, why not get here, you know, two thirty, three o'clock, depending on how packed the agenda is and just discuss some of those items, some of the conditions that have been discussed with the developer? Just to get, you know, three or four of us with more information leading into the meeting. And honestly, they're, they're open to the public, so any board member, even if you're not on that committee, if you, you know, you see the agenda and, and you're like, wow, that's, that's a full agenda, maybe I'd like to get up to speed on a few of those items, just come to the committee meeting.
We do need to be careful that we do not have a quorum present for committee meeting.
So we have to have less than
Six.
Six board members at the committee. Even if they're sitting out there
Now, if they're sitting out there, that may be different, I don't know, it's still in the same room, we'd have to get some legal advice on that.
Yeah, I mean, we can run that by legal. I mean, optimally, what, what you don't want is for a majority of the board who can then make a decision in the actual board meeting to be involved in a subcommittee meeting ahead of time.
Right.
Because, uh, you want the actual decision on the
Come from the planning board.
To come from the full board.
Okay. All right, we'll get some clarification on that then.
Yeah. Good question. So, um, the other part of the timing is that, um, it gives time to review the packet. Legislative happens before to inform the packet. Current planning is coming from applicants and staff is turning through it and then providing the information to the planning board and ample time to review it, so then some discussion could be had prior to the meeting. So that was the thought process with the, the timing of each, uh, long ranges, um, more as necessary, depending on what kind of long-range planning activities we have going on, so. Good.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is really, we, we already had this discussion. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to read the article that was sent out about zoning and housing availability. But we've really already had that discussion, so unless anybody else has anything they want to add, just move forward. All right, to new business, zoning text amendment, multifamily and dimensional standards in the MIC.
Yes, so this also touches on some of the topics that have already been discussed, uh, today. Uh, this is an application from the City of Hendersonville to, um, do two main things. Add multifamily as a permitted use back into the MIC. It was once there, it was removed, uh, and to reduce the setbacks in that zoning district as well. This is an intense, uh, zoning district that surrounds the hospital, has, um, uh, two minor thoroughfares and a major thoroughfare running through it. It is directly adjacent to downtown, um, and is surrounded by, um, a pretty, uh, you know, medium-density, single-family home, um, that would easily be described, described as a urban, uh, area of town and, uh, also has some history. And due to its location proximity to downtown, you've got historic neighborhoods and a very traditional urban form in this area. The proposal to make these changes, uh, went to the legislative committee back in June. Uh, their general support for, uh, the proposal, and we did talk through the details and what kind of impact it would have. Here, we, we have a list of all the currently, uh, permitted uses within the MIC. You can see it's, um, it's got a wide range of, uh, different varying uses, different types of residential uses, um, some commercial uses, a lot of medical, educational and cultural, obviously, types of uses. But one that is missing is the residential dwellings multifamily, and so that's proposed to put back in here, as part of the permitted uses. The other change would relate to the lot size, we talked about minimum lot sizes, in the, um, the presentation that was given previously. So this proposal would take the minimum lot size from eight thousand square feet to six thousand, which would align it with the R six, which is our high-density, uh, residential zoning district, high-density for Hendersonville, uh, because that's still a single-family zoning district. But a six thousand square foot, uh, minimum lot size. Uh, so if you're going to create a lot, um, it would have to be at least six thousand square feet. The minimum lot width is proposed to be reduced from seventy feet wide to fifty feet. This is in line with the traditional, or, uh, traditional urban form, uh, traditional neighborhood, uh, type of lot, fifty by one fifty lot. And the setback, this is a big one, current front setback is thirty feet, uh, from the front property line. Uh, that's the closest you could have a structure, is thirty feet, um, removed from the front property line, so essentially the, the right-of-way. This proposes to reduce that down to ten feet, uh, in, on all the local in, on all the local streets, but on the major and minor thoroughfares, it could be reduced to zero. Which is something you might find downtown is a good example, but also permitted in some of our other mixed use zoning districts creates a very urban feel. And it also helps slow down traffic and create some more pedestrian friendly environment when you bring buildings closer to the street. This is, that change in setback is coupled with another change that's on the next slide, but I'll finish with the setbacks here. Reducing the side setbacks from, instead of being ten on each side, it would be five feet on each side. Again, better utilization of land, more options for someone who would be developing that land. And same on the rear, reducing it from twenty to ten. The height is not proposed to change. So this is another important and impactful part of this proposal, which is all street parking lots shall be provided at the side or rear of buildings or the interior of a block of buildings and not closer to the street than the edge profile of the structures. For the purposes of this section, all sides fronting a street on a corner lot shall be considered the front. So if you're on a corner, you wouldn't be able to put parking on, on the side that was also facing a street. It would have to be behind the edge profile of the structure to be considered in the rear. Residential density. So the introduce, the introduction of multifamily would also be accompanied by some level of density that would be permitted by right. In this case, to, to, you know, to not make this too big of a leap where we're going from single family to multifamily. We're introducing multifamily into this district. It may make a lot of sense to do that. But we also don't want to just all of a sudden make it, you know, no density cap, which we do have in our CMU district and I believe a couple of other mixed use districts in downtown. Urban Village and Urban Residential are a couple of others. So in this case, we are providing, putting a maximum density and it's based on open space. This is, comes straight from the Central Highway Mixed Use Zoning District. So the more open space you preserve, the more density that you can have. And so I've got some examples of what that may look like. The map that's on the screen here, it overlay several things. It's got the future land use designation, which in this case is urban institutional. MIC is within the urban institutional future land use designation. And it relates to the zoning, which you have the MIC, PCD, the residential zonings districts are shown as well. And then the West Side Historic District, which is outlined in, in Brown, kind of along the, the bottom edge running along here. So you have a lot of things overlapping that are all part of the story that's being told here. For, in regards to multifamily in the MIC, the MIC zoning district allowed multifamily back in nineteen sixty-five, when it was initially adopted, was later removed in nineteen eighty-eight, nursing homes, rest homes and care facilities and progressive care facilities were added. And one of the quotes in the minutes was, because it was believed that higher density housing is compatible with the uses in the MIC. I was unable to identify exactly what action, what vote took place and when to remove the, the multifamily from the MIC. In nineteen ninety-five, planned unit developments, including multifamily were permitted. But then by nineteen ninety-seven, multifamily was no longer listed in the zoning district as a permitted use. The MIC zoning district contains a wide range of current land uses, including medical, institutional, commercial, office and retail, recreational, single family, two family and multifamily and vacant land. In particular, medical facilities generate a significant amount of traffic, light and other indicators of an, of an intense use. A multifamily density is proposed by staff would vary based on percentage of open space. And would result in opportunities for duplexes, quadplexes and other forms of missing middle housing. As was described in the presentation earlier. For example, a quarter acre lot with forty percent open space would permit a duplex. A larger half acre lot with forty percent open space would permit a quadplex. So a quadplex on half an acre. If you were to, to preserve up to sixty percent open space on a half acre lot, you could have a sixplex. Or a courtyard apartment that was shown in the example earlier. It's also possible that lots could be consolidated to provide for the infill of conventional apartments, which is what we saw with the Hawkins Point. Where they took five or six parcels and put them together to do a more conventional apartment building. So that's, that's distinct from the missing middle, which is you're, you're kind of dispersing your density with missing middle versus concentrating it all in one place. I think that's an important concept to, to understand. A lot of what you've seen have come through over the last twelve months have been large scale apartment buildings. Multi-stories, large parking lots, traffic, traffic generators, stormwater generators, things that have a profound impact on the landscape of the city. In this case, something like that could be potential. You know, it's possible that that could be put together, but the way that the lots are very small and already developed, you may see, you're more likely to see some redevelopment on smaller lots with an uptick in density as the potential outcome of this. And that concept between the dispersing the density with duplexes, triplex and quadplexes is right in line with the conversation that was had earlier. It's something we can continue to have. We're talking about reducing minimum lot sizes and things of that nature. That, that, those concepts go hand in hand with that. So we'll, we'll continue to explore that as we look at zoning reform as a, as a body. As it relates to the dimensional standards in the MIC, the MIC district contains a segment of a major thoroughfare, US sixty-four, as it approaches downtown. The MIC also contains two minor thoroughfares, Fifth Avenue and North Justice Street. This is a highly urbanized area that complements downtown and features party hospital and a small portion of the West Side National Historic, National Register Historic District. Redevelopment in this area has resulted in the number of parcels developed in a conventional suburban fashion as opposed to the original early suburban traditional neighborhood design that remains in, in part. Traditional neighborhood design would feature a mix of single family and multifamily residential and neighborhood scale commercial uses on a parcel or group of parcels typically defined by sixty foot by one fifty foot lot size, which is still seen in this, this area. These parcels would typically feature single family residential structures set back fifteen to twenty feet from the back of the sidewalk. They predominantly featured front porches and parking in the rear of the lots that were accessed either by alleys or long narrow driveways running along the side of the lot. And there are some alleys in this area as well. In order to promote additional opportunities for a mix of housing types to permit the type of urban form that define this area since it was initially developed and to promote a pedestrian friendly atmosphere, it is necessary to reduce minimum lot size, reduce the setbacks and require parking to be situated to the rear. Additional traditional neighborhood design standards could be considered to ensure compatibility with the West Side Historic District. That came up in our committee meeting today as well, potentially looking at the design standards from the Greenway Highway Mixed Use District and potentially adding that as a requirement. So that not only are we introducing some of these setback changes and introducing this permitted use of increased density, we're also ensuring compatibility by applying design standards as well. That was not part of our staff's original proposal. It was mentioned in the staff report that that really should happen and needs to happen at some point potentially. And then again, that was echoed in the committee meeting today. Taking a look at some photos, the, these are examples of multifamily that exists in the MIC. Currently, I think the bottom left is actually just adjacent to the MIC, but it's, it's right there on sixty-four. And so this is a current land use within this district. And then taking a look at some examples of the setbacks on this upper left, got a pretty stark difference between the structure that was built directly on the sidewalk. Zero setback on the front and this one that's a little bit closer to us where you have about a seventy foot setback before the building starts. All the parking is in the front. You've got a driveway aisle that's wide enough to park four cars in. And so that's, that's what a pedestrian, those are the two different types of environments that a pedestrian is dealing with in this area. One much more comfortable than the other. Same on the bottom right, you've got the building shifted way back from the street. Got all, the whole building surrounded by parking. With this potential change in the zoning ordinance, that building was, that, that lot was to be redeveloped. You could have a building right on the edge of Fifth Avenue setback ten feet. Or maybe zero on, that's North Justice Street, I believe.
There was zero from both.
Zero on both. So right on the corner with parking set to the, to the, to the rear. And, and really starting to create more of a, a sense of enclosure and a comfortable environment for pedestrians and one that puts people in that are not behind a steering wheel at, as being important in this scenario as well. Sure.
I'm just personally not a fan of that theory. Talks about putting people not behind yet, a thousand cars go to that, that office building. Ten thousand to every pedestrian. That would seem to be a place of priority other than driving.
Thank you. The, I would, you know, part of the reason for that may be that it is designed for automobiles and not designed for walking. So people don't have the choice to walk because it's uncomfortable. In this particular case, in this particular case, specifically MIC district, you have a mix of opportunities for employment, opportunities for shopping, opportunities for education. All downtown, right, just blocks away. So there's a lot that you can get to in a very short distance if you're comfortable walking. And so putting that environment together would provide that opportunity. And it aligns with our goals of our comprehensive plan. So under the urban institutional designation on the future land use map, the goal is to create a cohesive, well-defined urban campus for medical and educational institutions with supportive office service and residential uses that is integrated with downtown. And multifamily you'll see is listed as a secondary recommended land use. And then under the development guidelines for urban institutional, it points back to the downtown support designation. And essentially is upholding those same development guidelines for this area as well. And under the development guidelines for downtown support, you see the, the goal to minimize the front setback and place rear or limited side parking only. And so everything that is in this proposal that staff's put together is, comes directly from the comprehensive plan goals. The land use chapter goes on to include relevant goals and strategies such as encourage infill development and redevelopment in areas planned for high intensity development. Review zoning standards and revise as necessary to enable compatible infill projects. Consider a full range and a full range of short and long-term impacts when reviewing zoning code. Zoning change applications and other proposals that include, that introduce land use changes. When reviewing the zone change applications, the city should consider whether applications demonstrate a clear public purpose. Strategy LU three point six, update the zoning code to ensure conformance with the comprehensive plan. Under population and housing, there are a few strategies that promote mixed land use, promoting mixed land use patterns and compatible infill. A strategy to allow redevelopment and or reuse of single family homes that directly front on arterials into office or high-density residential uses in coordination with the future land use map. And goal PH dash two, encourage a wide range of housing types and price points in order to meet the diverse and evolving needs of current and future residents, match the housing supply with the local workforce and promote diverse neighborhoods. And then goal PH dash three, promote safe and walkable neighborhoods. There were no specifically relevant points under natural and environmental resources. Under cultural and historic resources, there was a couple of goals, preserve the viability and individuality of Hendersonville's historic neighborhoods in order to maintain their role in supporting community pride, livability and identity. As well as promote investment in and, in and adjacent to historic districts through compatible infill development. Particularly, particularly on currently under utilized nonhistoric properties. And that, those were the relevant parts of the comprehensive plan related to these proposals. Looking at the second criteria for a, in this case, I put rezoning, but it would be zoning text amendment. Would be looking at the compatibility. In this case, the MIC district is a highly urbanized area where efficient use of land is critical. The opportunities for residents to walk downtown or to school or to work are abundant. It is in areas like this that dense housing is most appropriate. Change conditions. In this case, the city has experienced increased residential development demand. Allowing for this demand to be offset by increasing the density within the areas of the city that have a mix of land uses and have sufficient infrastructure provides opportunities for dispersed infill development in a walkable location. And public interest. It, very simply, in this case, both of these are, were, were considered and included in the comprehensive plan. And so their, their value is reflected through that in terms of public interest. The fifth criteria, public facilities, this is in the heart of the city and is well-served by all public services. And under effect on natural environment, there's no known anticipated impacts. And I've drafted a comprehensive plan consistency statement for you to review. The twenty thirty comprehensive plan land use and development chapter calls for minimal front setbacks and recommends multifamily as a secondary use for properties within the urban institutional future land use designation. You could add to that, that parking is recommended to be in the, the rear and limited on the side. And then there are several points of rationale for approval and a couple of rationale for denial for your consideration. And with that, I'll open it up for any more questions or comments.
What we're talking about is a zoning text amendment to allow multifamily in the MIC and also change the setbacks to promote parking, not eliminate parking, but promote parking on the rear, in the rear and on the side.
To, to require parking in the rear side. The, the reduction in the setback, you had to, to connect those two things by, it's a minimum setback. So we're not saying you have to locate close to the street. But you can, right now, we're saying you have to set back thirty feet.
And I can remember a couple of instances where we actually had to change that recently.
That's right.
And move the building closer to the street away from maybe some residences in the back.
Through a C Z D.
Through a C Z D, right, right. Okay, so this would be a zoning text amendment to allow multifamily and change setbacks.
That's correct.
In the MIC for all buildings or just multifamily?
All right.
Would the setback change be for all buildings in the MIC or just?
It's all buildings. Yeah. And again, it's ten or zero.
Okay, now do we have to require parking on the side or the rear? No more in front?
Right.
What I have a problem.
Correct, okay. And just on the by right question, we do have a standard trigger that's fifty thousand square feet or greater triggers C Z D, but also fifty units or more will is an automatic trigger.
Those are the two triggers.
Those are the two.
For review process through the planning board and city council would be fifty or more units.
And fifty thousand.
Four fifty thousand square foot under root. But if it's multi-levels, you add those all up.
All the units would, would be total. If it was separate buildings, it would all calculate together as well. So it's by right to a point.
After that clarification, do we have questions?
I have two questions. First of all, I you can't fight city hall where Hendersonville is changing. And whether we put a zillion apartments in the county and annex them in or we look at what we can do within the city itself, it's changing. That's just what it is. Personally, I think if you reduce the amount of distance from the curb and you bring the buildings up closer, they live a hell of a lot better than having vacant buildings and empty parking. That's just my own opinion. To go along with that, are there requirements for any kind of shrub trees? Anything like that that is included in the zone?
Befriend. We're not changing anything.
We're not touching on that. It would depend on the reading. We're not touching on that. It would depend on the redevelopment and the scope of redevelopment. You can utilize an existing building and parking lot without having to bring it up to any landscaping standards. But if you were to redevelopment past a certain point. You may have to meet our current landscaping standards, which would require a five-foot. Vehicular land use strip. I'm looking for Tyler. He left already. He's our he's our he's our.
So that's what I wanted to.
Strength there.
Can't just clear cut everything, that's it. With no greenery.
No, if you redevelop or develop a site within any. Anywhere in the city, then you you've got certain landscaping requirements. Single family.
Put the building.
Doesn't have any.
All they can do is put three pots across the park. The building on the sidewalk, up to the edge of the sidewalk.
Yeah, how reconcile that for me, Matt?
So so parking, so if someone. If your parking faces a street, so this would not be the case here, right? Parking's gonna be in the rear. You have to have a five-foot vehicular planted strip. So we require that in certain cases. If you have an existing building, an existing parking lot and you are. You know, renovating beyond whatever the trigger is fifty percent of the tax value. Then you have to bring your parking lot into compliance. And so in this case, you would have to put that.
I think what they're saying is if you're zero.
You would not have, you you may have some other landscaping requirements at the your parking at the rear.
But you could just go.
On the side.
Building sidewalk, nothing in between.
On the major thoroughfares.
On the major thoroughfares and minor thoroughfares.
Yes, but that's where I have a hang up with this. It's the only place I have to hang up with this.
Potentially, someone could setback further. We're not saying you have to be at zero. We're saying that you can be at zero.
On a major thoroughfare or minor thoroughfare.
Now, there are there improvements within the right of way that can be made to soften that, to put in street trees, have bulb outs, create on-street parking. There could certainly be opportunities for that. Some of these are DOT streets, so those projects, you know.
Well, wouldn't you have to include that?
I'm sorry.
Wouldn't that have to be included in this rezoning? So instead of going to zero, you go to five feet?
So this only pertains to the private property. So any any improvements in the public right-of-way would not be included in any requirements we would have here. We would not make them make improvements in the public right-of-way as part of this.
We wouldn't be contradicting a buffering that's already in place on the front. In front of the lot. In other words, if there's a requirement now to have buffer in there and then you move the lot along to zero, how are you gonna have that?
No, it's only if your parking lot fronts the street, then you have to have that requirement. So if you don't have a parking lot in front of the street, then you wouldn't have to meet.
Okay.
That's a good question, though. I mean, there may be some other.
Don't we have a corridor landscape ordinance?
A quarter?
There there is a entry corridor overlay.
Or corridor?
Which does have street tree requirements.
So how do you reconcile that with zero setback?
On Sixth Avenue.
Oh, Sixth Avenue, is that in the?
Yeah, Sixth Avenue has an entry corridor. So you would address that at the site plan review process. If they had to have street trees, that would be a component of their site plan to be a comment that we would make at that time. So that it'd be possible that they could have. Components of the building at the zero setback line and, you know, variation in the facade. Which would then allow them to to do the trees. It's also possible, depending on the right-of-way. That we would allow the street trees in that area. So it would be. A preliminary site plan level review and conversation, nothing about the. Again, to Matt's point, the zero setback is they're allowed to go to that point. It doesn't require that they do.
Well, I seem to recall when Party brought the plans for the new. Medical science building there with a glass front. And their drawings showed some lovely trees. Well, if you can find a tree there today, I you have to enlighten me where it is. So. I I think we have a problem here allowing zero or even five-foot setback perhaps. There's just no room for landscaping, which they do need. And we do have an entry corridor landscape requirement. So I I don't understand the statement. Well, we'll talk about it. Plan, you know, it's allowed or it's not allowed. So we need some clarification on what is required for the entry corridor streets. I believe it's all four entry corridors, maybe Spartanburg Highway too.
So entry corridors overlay on to base zoning, so. There would, that's just how they work. There would not, we wouldn't eliminate. Something from an overlay zoning district. Because of the underlying zoning district. And you wouldn't you wouldn't apply something from an entry corridor overlay into the rest of the MIC. So there there are two different functions. At overlay together.
I think I don't want to put. Oh, I was just gonna say, I don't want to put words in the mouth. If the if the desire is that you want. A planting buffer along the front of a building, we don't currently have that requirement in any of our. Zoning districts. So there 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 are planting requirements that apply to open space. And then there are setback requirements and the setback. Can be whatever that setback requirement is. And then the buffer requirements are just specific to parking. And then when you have two separate uses, so that so the setback requirement. In terms of if if you want specifically to make sure that there is a buffer along the street front. That that may be a bigger conversation. Certainly by requiring the setback, it's probably likely that they'll then count that in development as open space. And open space would have some limited planting requirements associated with it. But. You know, the 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 thing that that I would highlight is that. In a lot of these districts, we we have zero setbacks. Especially with some of our older buildings. And that has changed over time in terms of what the layout and what zoning has required. But with a setback that's minimal, you're allowing the site developer to optimize the site. For whatever they want to put on that site. If there's a desire not to have that building front right up on the build or right up on the street. And again, the zero is only on our, you know, more. Significant thoroughfares, that would be Sixth Avenue and Justice Streets. Are the are the two thoroughfares on the comprehensive plan. So it would apply in those districts and then the ten-foot would apply elsewhere. Fleming is not a thoroughfare on the comprehensive plan.
It's not.
So it would only would only apply to those, but clearly there's a little bit of concern about that. That's certainly. I mean, Jim, I don't want to belabor that point. That may be something that we need to bring back to you all if you want to. If there are other concerns about the.
I think I think we've got enough information to move forward. I I don't, I don't see, go ahead.
Question, Matt, you touched a little bit on design standards and you. Stand on that a bit or that's not part of this?
It's not part of this that was packaged together. There are design standards in in our other zoning districts. Some of our other zoning districts primarily are mixed-use zoning districts that. Are all generally named after a location that they're set in. But we have the Central Highway Mixed Use, the Highway Mixed Use, the Commercial Highway or. Commercial Highway Mixed Use, Highway Mixed Use, Greenville Highway Mixed Use and the Central Mixed Use, CMU. And Urban Village and Urban Residential, those are. Primarily are mixed-use zoning districts and they have design standards that vary depending on those different locations. But as was mentioned earlier, the Greenville Highway Mixed Use Zoning District. Has some pretty detailed standards related to building materials and architectural. Design and the types of elements that need to be incorporated, architectural elements that need to be incorporated. And some site layout standards in addition to architectural standards. Windows, you know, how 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 they're arranged. Different levels of detail that are involved in the the structure, make it interesting, visually interesting. Avoiding, you know, blank walls and unbroken, you know, surfaces that are monotonous, things of that nature. And so we we've seen that applied in a couple of recent cases. Where those design standards had to be met and. I I don't know that it was all that challenging. It was a little much. You know, much more challenging than just putting a plain box on, you know, somewhere. But I don't think the design standards we have are necessarily overly burdensome. I don't know if our. Resident architect wants to add to anything related to our design standards, but. So, yeah, that's a general overview without getting into all the specifics.
And those do not apply in the MIC.
Do not apply in the MIC.
In the in the committee meeting prior to this meeting about adding those standards to this district. And I think staff agreed that that's something that they'd want to look at.
More specificity on what. Location, you know, Sixth Avenue versus Fifth and depending.
You could do about type by housing types. It's Greenville Highway setup. So if you're doing townhouses, here's. Well, there's some general standards for whatever you're doing in that district. And then if you're doing multifamily, here's some standards for that. If you're doing townhomes, standards for that. Single-family attached or actually detached has optional standards since state law. Precludes us from enforcing. Design standards on single-family and two-family homes. But so that's that's. You know, that's how it would work because you've got local streets, you've got thoroughfares, you've got different. These, the the classification of the streets is going to lend itself to different types of uses. And so those design standards, you know, could hopefully be nimble enough to apply. To the type of development that's taking place and be appropriate. So I I definitely think that could be considered. It's, you know. To the chairman's point, it's already packaged up in one of our. Mixed-use zoning districts. What if we just took that and applied it here, added another level of compatibility? To this National Register Historic District, at least a portion of it is. All of it is in an older area of town, some of which has been redeveloped and changed drastically. But this would be an area that you would think is significant and important in ensuring some compatibility.
Any other questions for staff? All right, this is a zoning text amendment, so we are gonna open up public comment at this point. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak about the zoning text amendment to the MIC district? How about anybody on the Zoom call? We got anybody on the Zoom call? If so, raise your hand and we'll unmute you.
Mr. Fitch, you've been unmuted.
Ken Fitch, ten forty-six Patton Street. Infill development often is listed as a positive response as a means to address the need for housing as you've been discussing. However, it does present serious issues, particularly in an area such as this with a great variety of distinctive properties and uses. An increased density on a parcel can bring issues which with with which you are familiar. Such as parking and trees. With the increased density of youths on a site, there is a serious need for adequate parking. Especially where overflow of street parking for residents, visitors and deliveries would be problematic. And the impact on traffic of such. And further, an infill development with increased density and building site plan and required parking. Often results in extensive tree and vegetation removal, often a clear cut. To 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 sustain, to support the building and the parking. Many situations, existing trees are significant and essential buffering elements between existing properties. And can be a distinguishing element of the character of that particular neighborhood. So the the removal of such. Trees which are on the landscape would raise an issue of compatibility. And the proposal to limit setbacks also limits the possibilities for. Additional tree and vegetative plantings, you know, as a mitigation. Further, there there are various zoning designations in this area. So a question would be supposing a property owner for an R six property. Wanted to apply for standard rezoning, say, under the MIC. Could they then? Rezone it and then by right construct a multifamily project? That's it. Thank you.
Miss Fitch. Anybody else on the Zoom call that would like to be unmuted and make some public comments? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close public comments. At this time, I do I do pursue it to Mr. Fitch's comments. I do have a couple of questions if nobody else has any. So I I guess to, and this would be for staff. So somebody that that is zoned residential adjacent to MIC could ask. Ask to be rezoned and then if this this change were to take place, they could put multifamily on there. And depending on the number of units would be dependent on how much open space they leave.
That's correct.
That's correct. And what what would trigger a tree board? Review of a project in the MIC for multifamily?
Just a conditional zoning, that's that's all that they review as it is now.
Okay, so any development by right does not go through the tree board?
Uh, no, does not. That's their main authority is related to public trees and.
Conditional.
Trees in the right-of-way and then they have a a role reviewing larger-scale projects that trigger conditional zoning review. And they review those as well. We are working with the tree board on, you know, potentially some tree tree ordinance changes that would apply. You know, in general. Maybe different triggers of different scales, but that would, instead of this being. A process where the tree board's only reviewing those projects that are large enough to trigger to come before them. And then offering up some kind of recommendation to mitigate the impact of that development. And it being a negotiation every time. These would be standards that would be very clear for developer going into the process. They would not be negotiable, things like that, so potential tree preservation addition. And these these would come before the legislative committee as well, but. Potential changes out there that may strengthen some of the tree ordinances. Early stages of work.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Matt, for any of the uses that are permitted now for MIC, somebody could go in and clear.
That's correct. Any development.
What Ken was worried about is if we change this, they can do it now. So that really is not in conjunction with your changing the zoning.
Yeah, you could, any of the uses, as you mentioned, medical office.
I mean.
Go in, redevelop, level of site.
So they could do it now.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Any discussion amongst the board here? I know, John, you've got some problems with requiring parking in the rear.
I do. I manage some buildings, all of which have been hit by cars when their buildings are up against the road. Multiple times, major damage in my own parking lot on Church Street, multiple cars into my parking lot. Hitting cars in my parking lot. So cars going along Church Street, King Street, so forth, sixty-four do frequently. Leave the road and really concerns me to have buildings inches from the edge of the road.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
You know me from the legislative committee meeting. I've got a, the only hang-up I have is the zero setback on Fifth, Sixth and Justice. I'd really like to have that ten-foot setback maintained. To encourage, I know it's not addressed here, but to encourage. Small trees, shrubbery, et cetera, for cooling, biodiversity aesthetics. Strikes me that having it right up against the sidewalk is creating the kind of corridor I see in Manhattan. Which really is not. Incenting pedestrian activity.
And that would be, Matt, part of their. Green space? If we if we did the ten feet in front. Then that could be a percentage. Of the developers.
Open space.
Could you go back to the slide? This should have the changes in the setbacks.
Yeah. Can you click on the screen? And did did I understand that Manhattan is the comparison and that it would be?
Yes.
On it'd be less walkable like Manhattan?
Like Manhattan, yes. And Manhattan is walkable because you have no choice.
So we're talking about changing the front from thirty feet to ten feet, but it may be reduced to zero feet along major and minor thoroughfares in cases where parking is located only in the rear. So it's going to be pretty rare that that's utilized. But if, if you were saying that if you put all your parking in the rear, that along three streets within that district, you could change your setback to zero if it, if it worked to your benefit and that's where you wanted to put your building.
You have to.
I like that ten, I like that ten.
Would not have to put it right up. You could, you can reduce it all the way to zero if you put all your parking in the rear, not, not on the side. But I, I do think to your point that what you're going to see is, is a, is quite a bit of variation from lot to lot, parcel to parcel. You're not going to get one continuous thing like we don't have now, so.
Can you remind me of the, uh, big apartment building, sixty-some units just approved on Greenville Highway? What was their setback in the front?
Greenville Highway has a zero setback. I believe they did, uh, set it back some based on some feedback.
I don't have it in memoriam, but you're, you're right. We did have.
There was initial zero and then it was setback some.
I remember the drawing of it showed some pretty big trees there. And it would be hard to do that on a zero setback.
We're not talking about a zero setback because you've got to put a sidewalk in. I mean, requirement of developing is putting a sidewalk.
But I'm talking about landscaping.
Right. That could be achieved by offsets in the building. That nature. Um, if, if that's, is that the only hangup with the setbacks amongst some of the board members?
That's my only hangup, yes, on those three streets, zero setback.
All right, um, so this is going to be a recommendation to city council for a zoning text amendment. There's a problem with some of us amongst us of a zero setback. You know, if we could maybe change that to, we would think in five feet, allow for some, some buffering, some plantings.
Ten's a very nice round number.
We can all agree on.
How does eight sound?
I'm against it over the requiring the parking in the back, so this part is moot to me. But I, I would say ten would be mine.
But you're going to vote against it anyway because of the requirement.
Well, I don't like cement meeting cement. You know, I'm with, I don't want it to look like.
We don't need forty feet of asphalt either.
I definitely agree with a huge part.
There are design standards for this stuff to start with. I mean, you're not going to have a concrete wall. It's going to be designed, it's going to.
To go with what Peter's saying is use the Greenville Highway. Incorporate that.
The design standard.
As a design standard.
We can put that in.
You know, then.
As long as we don't find that there's some kind of contradiction in there.
Well, any contradictions with, you know, we found height earlier.
Yes, the Greenville Highway mixed use has a forty-two foot height maximum. This, this has a fifty foot, right?
We could, we could massage it so that they work together.
Somebody, somebody ready to make any kind of a motion?
Let me just understand. So this means that there's, you cannot have parking in front?
That was zero setback.
The zero setback is option. Somebody wanted to.
Parking lot shall be provided at the side or rear of the buildings or the interior of a block of buildings and not closer to the street than the edge profile of the structures. For the purpose of this section, all sides fronting the street on a corner shall be considered the front. So there would be two sides of it.
And that's if they do resident.
Multifamily. Or is that anything?
This is any structure in the MIC.
In, in the MIC.
And again, the idea is that, just to clarify the corner lot, uh, let's say you're, 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 you want to put your building profile on Sixth Avenue and you're, okay, well, on the corner on Fleming, I'll put on my parking. This would say, no, you, you would, it would have to be behind the edge profile of the building. So you don't have one street that has a parking lot facing it and loo, uh, the other side.
Basic goal is to hide cars from.
Asphalt in the rear of the building.
I agree with John. I don't, I don't, I've had three offices here in the town, two, a couple on Fleming and, and the medical office building. And the parking was in front in, in both cases when I was on Fleming. And that worked out fine. I think it would have worked out very poorly if, if the parking were in back of those offices.
You'll never know.
Definitely not. I will not. Because that would necessitate patients walking around to the front. And a lot of my patients don't do so, so well, walking. So that would have been a problem.
Well, it requires two entrances of a building, basically.
The street entrance and then the rear entrance for, for the.
Will be the main entrance because that's where everyone's going to come in.
I have designed buildings like that for medical with the right on zero. And you're right, it's considered the front of the building. So the ADA access under the building codes for the front. And you're right that the people come in cars. And so then we had to do dual ADA to the back. So it is, that is true. There are communities, as Matt said, that are trying to create streets great escape or, you know, a walkable situation and, and you do get that benefit.
So is there a way? Is there a way to massage this to where it's not required, but promoted?
We have that now. I would, I would say it's in our comprehensive plan. It's promoted through that. Uh, we may have some language in our, not in the MIC, but there's language in our mixture use chapter that is voluntary. And so essentially developers want to know what they can and can't do. What are the rules? You don't have to do that. We're going to, you know, do this. And so, oh, we have to do that, then we'll design our building accordingly and they'll do it. Knowing what, knowing what to expect is really the critical component that we get feedback after feedback after feedback. That's what makes the C Z D process particularly challenging is there, there can be curveballs thrown in and, uh, they've already designed their site because that's the requirement that they do the preliminary site plan. So just a little feedback.
One emotion?
It sounds like, it, it sounds to me like between the setback issue and the parking issue and the design standard issue that perhaps I don't know what our agenda looks like next month, but if we could get some.
We can look at it. I will just remind everybody that this is a relatively small area of the city. This is it shown here. This is right next to downtown. This is, you know, right on busy streets.
Right around the hospital.
Large hospital, very intense area. So make sure we're, we're not changing the rules for the entire city. We're talking about the MIC, just making sure that.
And I'll, I'll note, um, you could make a recommendation in which you highlight those things which you do not agree with. This is a recommendation to city council. If, if there's an underlying agreement with the addition of multifamily to MIC. But the concern is with the development standards or setbacks. I mean, I, I think we've heard in the discussion here and can convey what the concerns were. Now, alternatively, you could direct staff to, um, you know, to, to hold on that um, and bring back something with, with alternatives, but it's also an option just to make recommendations for what you are all in support of, if there is that. And I, I think I've heard perhaps not requiring the parking in the rear and side and increasing the setback on, well, well, basically just eliminating the, the may go to zero. As the two sort of hangups, so you could recommend adoption of the zoning text amendment with those elements. That, that, that one, I'm a little more nervous about you all just recommending that we add that in because that's a lot of text. And while we do have them in existing districts, it's not currently in MIC. And I would, if, if that's something that you want us to pursue, I would say that we would need to take it back and add those design standards in and then bring it back to you, um, for review and consideration.
Applicant is the city.
Yes, this is a staff initiated.
How, how, how do you control the city council on this issue?
Well, so this is staff initiated. So what, what has happened is we've run into multiple non-conforming multifamilies in MIC that have created a lot of difficulty for staff and for folks who are looking at reinvesting in those multifamily units.
And site plans that were impacted by the setbacks.
Right.
But, but those issues.
Yeah.
Occurring.
So, so basically, I, I mean, I mean, I understand the concern about the setback thing, but, but when you have a thirty foot setback in front and you allow parking in your setback, you are by default forcing the parking to be up front. Uh, because you're, you're eliminating a big chunk of the parcel for use for anything other than parking. The, the zero setback, the ten foot setback, whatever you choose to do there, you're increasing the usable square footage of the parcel for development, which means you're increasing the options that a developer has in using their parcel. So a zero foot setback increases the total square footage of the parcel that is, that, that a developer is able to use in coming up with a market-driven good idea. And I, and I think for, for us, that's part of what we're thinking about. And I, I mean, obviously there are planning best practices that go along with that. But I also know that, you know, I mean, a thirty foot setback on a fifty foot wide lot is potentially, you know, thirty percent of the site. And so you start to get into, you, you're basically by default requiring parking out front when you, when you have that kind of setback. And I think that's what staff was really wanting to increase that flexibility. And, you know, by pushing the buildings towards the front, you're still able to do parking on the side or in the rear. Uh, it is a design change, but it's also one that there's nothing preventing. Well, there would be if we were to require the parking on the side or the rear, which we've heard here is maybe a concern. Uh, if, if there's, there's nothing that would prevent them from moving the building back from the street if that were a design goal that they wish to achieve. Right now, you know, the parking requirement in the side or rear would tend to push those buildings closer to the street. If you eliminated that, you know, you, you, you might see still that more suburban style where somebody was going to drop the parking in the front, but they'd have the choice uh, to move the building forward if it made more sense for them and we could encourage it. So two things, I think if you don't want to encourage those or don't want to recommend that to city council, I should say, you know, the, the ten foot versus the zero, you could easily make a motion to that effect. And we could take that motion to city council. If you wanted to add in the design standards, I'm a little more hesitant just to do that by motion. I, I think we'd need to bring that back to you to actually integrate them, figure out what that would look like. Um, and make sure that we're addressing any kind of incongruencies and you've had the opportunity to review those and make a, a, a specific recommendation to city council.
I got it. I got it. And so I guess if, if we, we all agree that MIC, you know, that multifamily belongs in MIC. We have some concerns about the zero setback and the required parking. I think, you know, this sounds like this board would entertain a motion. Somebody wanted to make one, maybe a five foot setback to allow for some planting, some landscaping. The thirty foot, like, um, Mr. Holloway alluded to is almost requiring the parking out front.
Is there, uh, recommended wording here?
A recommended what?
Motion.
Yeah, so, so what I would.
Should be on the cover sheet.
Do is in, see, we haven't really done this with zoning text amendments, so I don't have that number two in here. What I would say is make the first part of the motion. And
With the following exceptions.
With the following amendments and you can indicate a removal of the requirement for parking on the side and rear and a change to the setbacks on thoroughfares to five feet or ten feet, whatever it is that.
Well, let's, let's establish that. Are we comfortable with five or ten?
Before we go. For five.
I think before we go on, I think we have to consider, I would move that we return this to the staff to apply those design standards and vote on this next month. I, I think without the design standards, none of us want it.
Right. Uh, no, I, I, I don't agree with that.
MIC.
Could our motion include a timeline on looking at design standards?
On a separate text amendment.
Be a separate text amendment. But can, can this motion include a, a timeline?
I, I would say the motion just needs to, you know, if, if John wants to make a motion, they make a motion, um, and then the board can vote on that motion. And if there's a desire to give staff direction that to revisit adding design standards, I don't know that the motion can include a direction to staff. I'm not sure that's. I mean, you all can direct us to work on it. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it doesn't need to be a motion.
Like to, uh, consider the, the fellows out here have a project to present still. But if this, if there's no mad rush here, I don't know what we're going to accomplish by some of this and saying we're going to work on some of it. I'd rather just see it all at once personally.
So table it.
That would be my recommendation.
We don't have a motion.
Make a motion to.
Well, I say, all right, I'll make a motion to table this for further review by the planning staff and the members of this aboard, uh, as we have some big issues in design standards in MIC in general. I think we need direction from city council. That's where they want to go. That's a big issue. Okay? And if we're not hearing that from them, I don't know that we need to go there if they're not looking for that.
Well, if we don't have.
Second, right?
I made a motion to table it.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. That's one, two, three, four, five. You want to table it? Let's, okay, let's, let's do this again with a show of hands. All in favor of the motion to table this until we can look at setbacks and design standards and things of that nature signify by saying aye. Raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Any opposed? One, two, two, seven to two. Motion passes. Motion passes to table it until.
So direction to staff is to, uh, make amendments to those two items as discussed and then to add the, uh, design standards. I know you don't want to do that, John, but I think that's what the rest of the board is giving us direction on. And, and so we need to know what we're bringing back. Otherwise.
Recount the votes versus ten of us. I'm struggling with that for some reason. Let's, let's do that again. Um, we have a motion to table it and, and do some further investigation. All in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. One, two, three, four.
Five, six, seven, eight. Yeah, now it's eight to two. Got that too?
Thank you. Just, it just one more. As far as the design standards go, I have no idea what they are. Is that something that we need to look at and discuss as a board before we?
I, I would suggest that we run it through legislative committee or bring it back to the board. You guys get your packet, you review it, decide, send it to city council.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a rezoning for conditional, conditional zoning district on the cottages at Mastermont.
Yes, this project is for two parcels off of Francis Road. They're zoned R forty, a split zoned R forty and C two. They're proposing a PRD on twelve and three-quarter acres. They're proposing ninety-nine units, so be great at math, but forty-nine duplexes in one individual unit. Taking a look at the site, upper left, there is an existing driveway, tree line driveway that hugs the boundary edge the property. Upper right, you can see it's heavily wooded. That's a typical, um, kind of view on the property. Bottom left, there are some existing residential structures and there's a dry creek or wet weather conveyance that runs through the property. It's shown as a blue line stream on the. that runs through the property. It's shown as a blue line stream on the cities uh, or the U S G S map. Um, the applicant was able to uh, work with the Corps of Engineers to have that blue line um, stream removed, uh, because it does not, it's not an active creek. So our stream buffer uh, standards do not apply in this case. And at the back of the property is Allen, the Allen Branch Creek, which is shown on the bottom right. And um, there is a floodplain and stream buffer actions there. This is the site plan. It depicts the ninety-nine residential units. Um, also shows the drives, the sidewalks and the hundred and eighty-eight proposed parking spaces. Total open spaces, uh, eight point nine two acres is what I've got here in the calculations, uh, which is um, I've got it at seventy percent. Uh, and it also highlights the fire access with the grass pavers. Those are shown in red on the screen and the greenway easement that runs along the creek at the back. This site plan was reviewed by the Development Review Committee. Uh, the details were provided in your uh, staff report. Um, and I'll provide a summary here. The community development department comments were all resolved or addressed by the developers' conditions. Planning staff offered no uh, city-initiated conditions on this project. The stormwater administrator, NCDOT staff, public works, director, Mike Fire Marshall and uh, city engineer had comments, all of which had been resolved by the developer or will be at final site plan. Floodplain administrator and water sewer department each reviewed the project and offered conditions related to the provision of a greenway easement and prioritizing the preferences for the sewer connection. And I'll provide some details on that. Uh, the, the transportation consultant did not review the project. However, due to the location of the project on a local street, Francis Road, um, a condition has been proposed that the developer perform a TIA after the rezoning in, in order to ensure any traffic impacts are mitigated. Uh, and that would be done at the developer's expense. So here are the conditions. These are all listed on the site plan. So these are agreed to already. And uh, they began with a twenty-foot wide greenway easement running parallel to Allen Branch. Um, the tree boards recommended condition uh, to uh, replace uh, some of the proposed trees with oaks and um, maples. And uh, to protect the, the trees that are slated to be preserved by meeting our standards for tree protection. Um, and then planting an additional fifteen oaks, maples and/or poplar trees. Um, this is a counter. Uh, the original condition proposed by the tree board included a minimum two and a half inch caliper. That was not agreed to uh, by the developer. Uh, the uh, as I mentioned, the TIA being performed after the rezoning is considered was also uh, included in the conditions that were agreed upon. Those all exceed our minimum standards. There's also three conditions coming from the developer that reduce our standards. Uh, one is to request that the relief uh, uh, be granted to reduce the distance or to enhance in, in, enlarge the distance that the um, parking space can be from a residential unit from the seventy-five foot requirement. And uh, that the developer be granted relief from the second fire access. That is on there, but that is actually no longer required. State statute has clarified that under a hundred units, you do not need the second um, fire access. And they, this next one is one that'll take some explaining. So they have proposed any developer provided aerial stream crossing shall be elevated above the hundred-year floodway or the non-incursionment zone and permitted under applicable codes. So that is one that was a counter from staff. Staff initially said you cannot cross Allen Branch with your sewer connection and aerial access, uh, aerial uh, stream crossing would not be permitted. The um, developer uh, came back and said, well, we asked for an easement to connect through the property next door, but unable to re-work out uh, an agreement with them on that. So we have to cross the stream. And uh, we said, well, if you do that, you're gonna have to do a flood study. We're gonna have to know the impact of this uh, stream crossing. We looked at it uh, a little bit further and uh, we have a uh, a condition that we are proposing coming from our uh, water sewer and um, floodplain administrator. And I will read that out to you. I will touch base. There's one tree board recommendation for plantings around the uh, the stormwater uh, facility that the developer did not agree to at all. And that's up there. So these, this not agreed to conditions. Be going back to the stream crossing. This is lengthy, so bear with me. Uh, the developer agrees to connect to existing gravity sewer on the south side of Allen Branch, west of the subject property. So going back real quick to see if one follows. South of Allen Branch, west of the property. So we're trying to direct to a sewer connection, which I, again, I'll show you right here. In yellow is the parcel and there's a manhole here that's at the correct depth. Trying to connect to existing sewer over there. To connect uh, to existing sewer on the south side of Allen Branch, west of the subject property, so long as it is feasible. If a connection is not currently feasible, then the developer shall use best efforts to obtain a sufficient utility easement from affected property owners for connection. And this is, in this instance, best efforts include an offer to purchase a utility easement on the affected land at market value as determined by a certified M A I appraisal. If the developer is unable to obtain a utility easement from the affected property owners, then the developer may request that the city of Henderson will obtain the needed utility easement from the affected property owner, subject to the developer repaying the market value of the easement obtained by eminent domain. In this instance, fair market value shall be the value as determined by the condemning authorities certified M A I appraisal or jury verdict, including any cost and attorney's fees. If the city chooses not to use their powers of eminent domain, developer may be permitted to install a subsurface gravity sewer crossing the stream with adequate cover as determined by the city for sewer connection across Allen Branch Creek. If upon review by city staff, subsurface gravity sewer stream crossing is not feasible, the developer may be permitted to install a stream crossing without adequate cover after performing a flood study at the developer's expense, showing no, no impact of flooding will occur. The aerial crossing is subject to the, the review by city staff and shall be as near to the stream bottom as possible to reduce the amount of exposed pipe. And so I showed this slide quickly. Um, but essentially there is sewer, this is Cedar Bluff. This development next door, there is sewer right here, but the manhole depth is not correct. So punching through right to here would not uh, would not work according to the water sewer and our engineers. So they would need to connect further down closer to the creek. Now, keeping that in mind, that this parcel here is Cedar Bluff. This is where the sewer connection needs to run across. Next to Cedar Bluff is Cedar Terrace. The city has, currently has a greenway easement running along Allen Branch here. Uh, there's also the proposal for Mastermind to have a greenway easement as part of their development. With all of that in place, the city would have easements in place to connect from Mastermind all the way down to the Clear Creek Greenway and all the way from along the Clear, Clear Creek Greenway to the Oklahua Greenway. So all of this is intact, except for this red line here. This is Cedar Bluff. So going back, we've got the need for a sewer connection down here. And along, following that same essential path, you have the need for a greenway easement to then have a connection where five high-density, medium-density developments in this area, Mastermind, Cedar Bluff, Cedar Terrace, Universal Lakewood and another uh, apartment complex as proposed at some point in the future could potentially walk out their back door onto this greenway, regional greenway network. Um, and so those two things are going together. Both need easements and generally the same location. The, the condition is set up to show preferences. So we were saying, first try this, then this, then this. And it gets into, uh, Luke, can you move the um, the box at the bottom of the screen, just slide it up? There you go. So on the bottom, we have our stream crossing preferences. And the first one is that they would go under the creek and leave space between the bottom of the creek and where the pipe would be. That's called adequate cover, sufficient cover, so that it's the preferred uh, installation process. The second option and the third option would require a flood study. Option one does not, does not impact flooding. So would not require a flood study. The second one is at the very bottom of the creek, just very, you know, the pipe is exposed right at the base of the creek. That would require a flood study, but that is the second preference to uh, the adequate cover. The third is that it goes above the water. It's uh, it's elevated above the base flood elevation. Uh, in this case, it would be exposed. You'd be able to see it. It'd be above the water. It would require peers that hold it up, that stabilize it every so often. I don't know the exact, uh, someone indicated it was every twenty feet that they come in twenty-foot spans. I, I could be incorrect. Uh, developer may have more information on that. Those peers then add another element of potential flood hazard uh, obstructions. So that would definitely need a flood study. So that's kind of the last option. So thanks for following me along that trail. Uh, but that pretty much sums that up. And now, none of that was in your packet. So um, unfortunately, um, throwing this curve ball at you guys. Developers, engineer was just made aware of this um, on Friday. And so they've had a little bit of time to to stew on it and hopefully we can get some idea from them, um, how it sits with them. Uh, can you click back on the screen? So a neighborhood compatibility meeting was held. This very lightly attended. Uh, just some questions about the uh, the, the specifics of the development and how it will be arranged. The current land use, as I mentioned, it's R forty, which is our lowest density uh, zoning district. Uh, and also C two, which is one of our more intense zoning districts. So it's very unique in that way. The property also borders another R forty track and uh, to the east and further east, you find the C three highway business zoning district, which flanks uh, Timmy Rock Road. And to the north, there is the planned commercial development associated with Highland Square Development, where Walmart and Sam's Club and several other shops are located. Uh, this development is buffered from the subject property um, by Allen Branch. So the, the Highland Square is buffered by Allen Branch Creek. And there's a large retaining wall there as well. Uh, to the east of the subject property is a PRD, the Cedar Bluff Apartments, which I mentioned, and the Cedar Terrace Apartments that I mentioned. Uh, combined, there's uh, density of about five point six units per acre already existing in this area. And uh, all properties to the south are zone C two, secondary business. Future Landuse designates almost this entire area as Regional Activity Center on the Future Landuse map. Uh, this is uh, due to the, the proximity to I twenty-six and US sixty-four, Timmy Rock Road. And of course, the small sliver of natural resource and agriculture designation along Allen Branch. Francis Road is a local street. Uh, taking a look at the rezoning criteria, uh, the first is related to the comprehensive plan consistency. As I mentioned, this is designated as Regional Activity Center. It's also designated as a priority growth area and development opportunity in our growth management maps. The population and housing chapter uh, includes some strategies related to encouraging variation in lot sizes and housing types within new, new developments. And encouraging mixed land use patterns that place residents within walking distance of services. The natural and environmental resources chapter has uh, good numbers, relevant strategies related to protecting land adjacent to streams, encouraging restoration of natural habitat, encouraging cluster development that preserves open space while allowing a return on investment. Acquire uh, the city acquiring and or encouraging acquisition of environmentally sensitive properties. Uh, promoting the preservation of woodlands and promoting the location and design of open space areas within development so that they contribute and link individual homes to the city's green infrastructure network. And there were no relevant strategies under the cultural and historic resources nor the community facilities chapter. Water Resources Chapter touches on the, the, the need for low-impact development practices uh, with stormwater management. And the transportation and circulation had a few. Uh, develop a multimodal transportation system that encourages pedestrian and bicycle usage in order to promote pedestrian safety, reduce vehicle miles traveled and encourage community interaction. A strategy to encourage mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development that reduces the need to drive between land uses. Identify and prioritize needed pedestrian connections within the community. Encourage pedestrian connections between dead-end streets and adjacent neighborhoods and preserve and expand the public greenway system as a core component of the bicycle and pedestrian transportation system. Several relevant points there. The second criteria is related to compatibility. In this case, this area uh, has a, a mix of high-density and low-density residential as well as intense commercial uses. Uh, so a wide range of, of varying uh, land uses in the vicinity. The third criteria is to change conditions and we've seen increased development demand uh, in this particular area. Um, some under construction, some were expecting to have applications coming in uh, any month now. Uh, the fourth criteria is public interest. Um, there are some housing numbers uh, that were in your um, packet. I believe the total needed to be updated, the total of uh, that had been approved is two thousand four hundred sixteen. And of those, eight hundred and forty-six are under construction. So that was not in your packet. And I thought we talked about that being important to understand that even though this number's been approved, how many are actually being built? At this point, we have a hundred forty-six that are under, under construction. The fifth criteria is public facilities. Uh, this property would be served by the city's water sewer, police, fire and public works. Francis Road is a local street, but is man, maintained by NCDOT. The sewer connection has been discussed in detail. The greenway, the rear of the property um, would be needed to complete the extension of the Allen Branch Bird Trail from this property to the Clear Creek Greenway. And then from points on, uh, you know, then to Oklahua Greenway and, and from there you can connect to many things. The uh, sixth criteria is related to effect on the natural environment. That, those numbers are incorrect on the screen there, but uh, as seen in the photographs, heavily wooded um, site. And uh, I do not have the specifics unfortunately on the number of trees. The developer can provide those numbers um, from their site plan. The uh, comprehensive plan, a draft comprehensive plan consistency statement is on the screen for your review. The subject property is located in an area designated as a development opportunity and priority growth area. Uh, according to the city's twenty thirty comprehensive plan, furthermore, the Regional Activity Center Future Landuse designation recommends densities exceeding those for this development. Uh, and then some rationale for the approval are on the screen and uh, rationale for denial is also available. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Do you have any questions for staff?
Are these, these are rental apartments or condos or purchased? What are they?
I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I, my understanding is that they are rents.
You can ask the developer when they make their presentation. Any other questions for staff?
And what about the sidewalks on, on Francis Road there?
They would be, they would have to provide this.
So this, this is considered, I guess, multifamily. Is that correct?
Pull that back up. Cottages.
There you go.
It's two family.
So it's not considered multifamily? Cause, cause we ran into the, you know, multifamily is supposed to be on a major thoroughfare or boulevard.
Yes. So this is, so that's the issue with the TIA. So PRD.
Okay.
States that it needs to be on a thoroughfare. This is a local street, not a thoroughfare. It says, you can locate on, on a local street if you're able to uh, you know, indicate that you're not going to have a significant negative impact on the traffic. And so.
TIA would, would show that or any improvements that would need to be made by the developer.
That's correct. If they need to mitigate any impacts directly associated with their development, they would be on the hook for that. That is also in our zoning code. It's a standard. If a TIA is performed and mitigation is, is recommended, it is the developer's responsibility to make those improvements. No, we can't, it shouldn't be done by others.
And Universal Lakewood, the TIA, did that not indicate that there was a required extra? So when I come up to the top of Francis Road and I hit Chimney Rock Road, US Highway sixty-four, did they not require that they make a third, like if you're going straight onto Sugarloaf, right onto sixty-four, left onto, they wanted three lanes there?
Uh, Luke, do you remember the D? I know some mitigation was required there.
Yeah, I'm not one hundred percent of the detail, sure.
I haven't seen that improvements yet.
So they will be required to complete those as a component of their COs, their final signals. So they've got, they're able to, that's correct. So Universal is. So Universal is under construction and they're.
But before they get COs, they have to make those.
That's right.
Changes.
That's right. They have to make the improvements to the.
And all I'm thinking is the, 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 the traffic impact analysis of this development would.
It will.
Need to take that into.
Yes, we would share that with them.
It will take that into consideration.
And other proposed development that hasn't been constructed.
One more, one more question. The, the, the elevated sewer line seems like a horrific idea. It sounds horrible. Because not only will it hold back debris when things flood and create perhaps a flash flood. But something could come floating down the stream in a flood, break that. So whose responsibility is that line once it's installed?
My understanding is it would be the city's responsibility once the developer installs it.
Oh, boy. Talking about the vertical. Yeah, I'm talking about the elevated sewer line. That, you know, it all it takes is one stump or one tree to come floating down the stream and break that thing. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. The developer, at this point, if you'd like to come up. Give us your name, address, all that good stuff. Tell us what you're thinking.
Warren Sugg with Civil Design Concepts. My address for what it matters is three seventy seven Germany Cove Road in Williamsburg, North Carolina. But I work in Asheville and then before this, I was board in city council. I'm joined by Tom and Gray with DHI. I'll go through a short little presentation, take as many questions as you guys like. These guys are here to help take any questions they have from their side. I'll try to hit on all the things that I kind of picked up from that I want to give further information on from, from Matt's. Presentation. So I'm with Civil Design Concepts. We're the civil engineer on it. Been employed by DHI to, to help them lay this out to represent them in this CZ matter. Not in a legal way. I'm not a lawyer, just a civil engineer. But we have gone through several different processes here from neighborhood compatibility, multiple emails and conversations with staff. Pre-commission and before you all and certainly move on to city council. Post meeting here. We do have ninety nine units here, as mentioned. Forty, forty eight of those are duplexes and then we have the one single unit that is, and then the northern edge. Next to Francis Road. We do have some amenity space in the middle, so that would be the pool, the clubhouse area, leasing mail rooms. Storage, all the stuff that's kind of essential to any kind of development here. We've got great circulation internal to the site. We also, through the process of talking with staff, have a very generous entryway road there. That would get folks in and out. You'll see the red areas that I'll point to. Those are grass paved areas. Those are. Areas where the fire truck in the instance of a need could pull up onto and fight any fires and that comes from a hose pool. Distance that they have to have from their, from their vehicles. So we can go into detail on that if we need to. We also have trash on site. The compactor is on the right hand side as you get to where the property starts to open up. I've got to have this. Yeah. There we go. That is the compactor. These are the red grass pave that I was talking about. This is our main entrance here off of Francis. So this is Francis. Road right here. Our property line is this black line that is here, then it jumps up. Then it goes across all the way to here and then up and around Allen Branch is this stream up here. You'll also see the, the twenty foot greenway easement that we had agreed to up here in our conditions as well. This blue area is a pond. This would be a post-development pond. That's where the stormwater would go to get captured and treated before releasing. And then this center area is the clubhouse and pool, sort of central amenity space.
Do you have a gate?
We do not have any gates. Yeah, just accessing, you may be seeing some of the crosswalks that we added. Got quite a bit of sidewalk throughout the whole development to get folks from their different units to their parking. One of the items we did ask for was a seventy five foot and to just give kind of a. You know, it's, it's a very difficult, difficult part of the code. Standard parking lot, even with a twenty four foot drive out would be sixty feet from edge to edge. So if you do a little math problem, you say I park on this side, you go sixty feet. Then if you just add five more feet for a sidewalk, now you're at sixty five. Say you had five more foot for a grass strip. Now you're at seventy. So that means that every door has to be within that five feet. That's very hard to pull off. Especially if you start talking about apartment complexes or something that has multiple parking spaces side by side. So. I know y'all are already thinking through text amendments and everything else. Maybe something you want to look at just holistically. It's a very difficult thing to produce. Few items to, to just sort of bring up. We do have all the connectivity going between the different sidewalks. We have the units. That you'll see yellow, these are the duplex. So you kind of see them left and right of each other. That one single unit is up here. The red area represents the setbacks of the site. We have to stay within all the buildings within. You don't have any of the other sheets on here, correct? Okay, that's. That's fine. I can just talk in, in sort of general terms. So. Matt was talking about going to the west here with the sewer and that was one of the early conversations. DHI has, has been reaching out to that, that owner. And it's just kind of come at an impasse. They're just not willing to sort of negotiate reasonably. So I hear your concerns on going to the north. There is a sewer on this other side that's shown on our C six oh one plan. I don't know if y'all have that in your packet, but. That is our sewer plan. That shows that connection going across. We have had a survey done that gives the bed of that stream, gives the, the, the sides of it, shows all the different items. As well as that invert on the other side, which is on Walmart or Sam's Club ownership. They have had conversations with those folks and those are amenable to connection. So an easement. There. So that is, that's the route we have. That's the route that's available to us. As mentioned, Friday, I got this information about. The desire to have that sewer go to the west. I also got the desire that. The property to our west that's already built out doesn't have this greenway easement. So the very thing that. The city has asked for and we're granting. Wasn't asked for, wasn't granted on that property. So there's, there's only a couple of ways to get that at this point. You, you condemn the property to get that or. You ask really nicely and, and figure out what amount of money it takes to get it. It's, it's kind of the toothpaste is out of, out of the tube at that point, once it's already been developed. So we understand that. We're all about the greenway connection. We're happy to, to help in any way we can. The concern with it and you saw how long it is, is the timing. I believe you mentioned you're in real estate. Many of y'all seem like you've done real estate. There's a real estate contract. Plain and simple. And money, it takes money to get those things extended out, takes money to delay in time. I, I don't know. And maybe you guys know, maybe legal knows. How long would it take to get that condemned? Months, years? I don't know. At the meantime, these guys have a great project that we're working through all the details. We're. Working through all the conditions and we would be at the mercy of, of that timeline. So that's, that's not fair, just sort of stating it plainly. But we recognize the, the desire to have it that way. What questions can I answer?
Questions for the developer.
Walmart has agreed to allow you to go underneath.
David Grout's agreed to an easement on their property, which is where the, the manhole is.
You go to the manhole.
Yes.
And it will work.
Yes.
Warren, of the three options that are on the bottom of the screen. Yeah.
So we would love to be able to be, to be here. But the manhole that's on, I'm going to call this area here, the Walmart side is just not physically low enough. So in order to, to do this option, you would have to go to the Walmart. So this line right here. You would have to go over here and start lay, relaying public line. And I frankly don't know. It may be. Hundreds of feet. It may be thousands of feet that you'd have to relay lower. I don't know the exact slope on the public line. Usually these bigger public lines are laid at a pretty minimal slope and as deep as they can possibly get so that they can accept as much sewer as they can. So. I would have to do an analysis, but I have no idea right now how much lower it would need to be to get into condition one. So my hopes are that we can be closer to condition two. I don't know. Right now exactly how much into the stream would be. Ideally, and, and this is something we could talk with staff about, a lot of times it might actually be better to be. Three than it would be two. Two, you know, you're always going to have water up against you. Three, you could be elevated to a point to where. You hardly ever have water that ever touches that pipe. So it's, it's something that's in discussion. Like I said, we just found out about this on Friday. We're, we're, we're trying to convey and understand what we're up against.
And these are two story. Your houses.
Some of them are ones and some of them are two stories.
And what are their minimum square foot?
Minimums.
The minimums, I think, are seven hundred and fifty. Our typical one bedrooms get down to seven hundred and fifty per one unit, obviously two units per structure.
Are these rental or purchased or?
Rental.
They're all rentals.
And the difficulty with going to across the. Space to get to the manhole to the west is cost?
It's probably time as much as it is cost. It's like you owning the land. I can't, I can't go on your land unless you give me permission. I can't go build something on your land unless you let me. Or unless I'm the city and I come to your land and I say, I'm going to condemn your piece of land and then there's legal process and I don't know what, I don't know what that timeline is. It's probably not short.
Collection system with a pump, that's not as far as to get to number one.
You mean a force, like a force main pump?
Obviously gravity.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
You put it uphill and then.
Yeah, it's possible, but I, I don't even know that city staff would want us to go to a pump condition when gravity is available.
It's over my pay grade. I will speak to these people.
Understood though. Yeah, well, it's a good question, good point. I, I think it would bring up some other complexities, but we'll. Exercise everything.
I'm not sure that the city is in favor of pump stations.
No.
Per se.
Maintenance.
Maintenance and costs. But it has been done in the past. Who, who maintains a?
City takes it off.
Just like they would this elevated sewer line. Any other questions for the developer? Go ahead, Neil.
Yeah, I've got a couple. First one, this, this strikes me. As someone who wants to encourage walking in the city, as a great opportunity to have a cut through. Going over to Highland Square Plaza. So you're not forced to get into your car and either go on to sixty four or go over on Lake George, just effectively. Get to stores a couple hundred yards away. Is there any way in hell that could be pulled off?
It'd be very difficult and the reason being is there is a large retaining wall that holds up the parking lot.
Yes, and I think the stairways and.
Right. So anything's possible, but you're talking to be ADA compliant and get all up there. That's. Probably thousands of feet of ramps and rails and turn switchbacks and everything else to get from stream level back up to, to the area. But as you mentioned.
I can dream.
Yeah, as you mentioned, I mean, proximity to be able to drive around is. It's very, very easy and, and we, we encourage and we're willing to do the greenway on our, on our property. It's just hard for us to. Force the greenway on somebody else's property.
Yeah. So the piece of this that most people don't want to address is this is already occupied by a large number of homeless people. But their walking route to Walmart either goes along the stream and down end and comes up next to Sam's Club. Or it goes all the way up to Four Seasons Boulevard, well, Chimney Rock Road at that point.
Second question, people here will love me for this one. The shopping or the Highland Square Development. I'm, I'm a big fanatic of trying to minimize wasted lights. Highland Square is wonderful. When they close down at night, they dial down their lights significantly, minimize the disruption to the night sky. Avian life, amphibian life. What are your plans for lighting? We had world of clothing as it goes into. Storage units commit to having zero light trespass and having fully shielded lights. Can we get the same from you?
Who was that? Sorry.
The world of clothing across sixty four. Converting it to storage units.
You want to flip them back to the site plan?
With the shopping center being cognizant of reducing light pollution.
So.
Get that from you also.
Yeah. So I'm talking through it a little bit. Most likely in the lights that I think you're talking about is your, you know, your tall street type lighting.
Yes.
That bleeds off. So you would have some lighting that would be in this parking area. You would have some apartment, some light that would be in this sort of parking area and here. But then everything on the outside is really just going to be the, the units themselves. I don't, I don't think they would be in intent to go back there and start putting in. You know, massive, massive light pole.
Downward facing, fully shielded.
Right, yeah. We're not trying to do uplights and all that kind of good stuff. I think. I don't know how much we can commit to as far as light levels at property lines, but I think the intent is to make it safe. Within the, the development, the walkable area, the area where people are going to be parking, but. I don't think we intend to be a beacon of light, you know, along our.
And I think what, what Neil is alluding to is perhaps another condition, because this is conditional zoning. Asking for your site lighting to be shielded and not go off the property. Other developers have agreed to.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of how we, like you said, kind of laid it out where the backyards were facing the property line to avoid those lights. And there's that fine mix of too much light, right? And then having enough where you feel safe walking. Community. So yes, we're very cognizant of it. But yeah, I think we could absolutely.
Just one thing I might would ask because of the way this uniquely out, you do have sidewalks that are going, you know, further out from where you're. Most likely going to have your street height, street lighting that's going to be higher, taller on higher poles. Would you, in addition to what was mentioned by the plane board members, consider, you know, nothing greater in height than pedestrian scale lighting? Something up to that effect on the sidewalks. So you're, once you're bringing the height down as you get further away from the parking lots. You're providing the security of the lighting, but the height's going to keep it from going out too far to neighboring property owners.
Yeah, we could work on the wording. I'd say something along secure, secure lighting within the pathways.
It's also shielded.
And just to be quite honest, I am not a lighting expert. So if you were to tell me a bug rating, this, that and the other, which I'm sure maybe you're the expert at.
Oh, no.
Whoever it is, you know, we'll, we'll take some of that in, but I'm, you know, I understand what's. What's bright in your eyes and what's not. We want it to be safe, but we're not trying to, we're not trying to trespass.
I'm just the irritant, not the expert.
What's that?
I'm just the irritant.
Understand.
I just don't want to light up the night sky for everybody and.
I don't know anyone who wants to pay to light up the night sky.
Yeah.
This holding pond thing, you said the water is held there and then treated and then into the creek. How, how does that work?
Yeah. So whenever you're doing stormwater controls, when you're during construction, you have to have sediment basin. So basically the ponds that have the little. Weirs in them that collect the sediment out and you clean that out. Then it's post-construction, you have. More aesthetically pleasing permanent pond. So that pond stays there. The water goes into it. It draws down over time. When you have your bigger flows, your ten year events, your two year events, it has some draw, some slow drawdown. It draws down over time. When you have your bigger flows, your ten-year events, your two-year events, it has some draw, uh, some slow drawdown. Detains it and then releases it.
You said something about the water being treated.
Yeah, anytime water goes back through the groundwater or infiltrates it, it's treated. That's. We're not doing, we're not doing chemical treatments, but that's uh, in stormwater jargon. That's, yeah, that's how that's called. Uh, there probably s- some safety fencing if we decide to be a permanent pool pond. Uh, we're keeping it pretty um. Right now, it may be a buyer retention that would be a quicker drawdown. You typically don't have that with a uh. With a fence, because it draws down within about twelve to twenty-four hours, um, if it holds water. Um, these guys from a legal standpoint. Yeah, and if they're children or adults and it's a permanent pond, we'll have a fence around it to protect. They don't want the liability of somebody in it.
Any other questions for the developer? All right, thank you. This time we are going to open up public comments. There's anybody on the Zoom call that would like to speak, please use the raise your hand feature. And we'll unmute you.
Uh, Ken Fitch, ten forty-six Patton Street, uh, just a question about the um, the grass paved areas. Um, can those areas be used for medical emergency vehicles and access? Because those outlying uh, uh, units, it, it could be problematic. So just wonder, can those be used for other? Uses and means to access those, those units. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Okay, anybody else on the Zoom call? The raise your hand feature? Okay, how about anybody in the room? Is anybody in the room that would like to speak about this project to the board? All right, uh, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Um, again pursuant to. Mr. Fitch's question. So the grass paved areas that we were mentioned for fire trucks. Other medical emergency type vehicles could utilize those to get back to the apartments. Being walked to.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, what, what is the distance? In other words, like, we know it's more than seventy-five feet because you've asked for permission to do.
So a hundred and fifty foot is city of Hendersonville's hose drag distance. So if you think about it, you. Um, you're, you're only allowed to drag a hose from this point. A hundred and fifty this way or start here and go a hundred and fifty this way. Hence the reason it has to get to this point because from here. To that back corner is less than a hundred and fifty that direction or that direction.
What about the others?
What's that?
The other corner on the upper right.
Upper right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, those are, that's less than a hundred and fifty from all directions.
But if I ended up parking, um, and I had one of those units in the back, what's, what's my, how much, how far am I gonna have to walk?
Well, you're parking right, I mean, if you park right there.
No, I'm talking on the other side with it, where you've got a stack three deep. The other side of the property, the units are three.
Yeah, right here.
If I park, let's say there was no parking even on my side, if I had to park on the other side of the parking lot, how far am I? Sixty feet for the parking lot and maybe another sixty, seventy feet to my unit.
Yeah, I, I don't know that they would have signed parking out here. I, I get what you're saying. I mean, I guess in a worst case scenario, if somebody. Had to park over here, but they were in this unit. I don't, that's four, five hundred feet. I don't know.
I forgot to ask you, um, it says here that you. Uh, would like relief from the seventy-foot requirement. What are you looking for?
I guess our worst case scenario would be assuming somebody doesn't have to park on the other side of the whole development. Two hundred feet, ten or fifty feet. I don't know that we have to define a.
No, no, I mean here the requirement for the parking space is.
That's what we're talking.
That's what we're talking about, right? Okay, any other? Any other questions? Alrighty, discussion, what do you uh? Pick on somebody new. What are you thinking, Andre?
Um, I think my only concern is the stream. I like that we're bringing new housing. I like it's walkable and getting other bikes around you.
Okay, Laura?
Um, I would agree more of the same. Um, I think in the location where it's at, it seems to be very compatible. It's unfortunate the other landowner won't agree to the easement.
So we could tap into a, a manhole that's on this side of the stream.
I don't, I don't like the idea of eminent domain, to be honest.
Alright, Dawn?
Pretty good with project, uh, how you resolve that sewer issue.
I'd say the same. I'm pretty comfortable with it and know that as long as there's a requirement to resolve that sewer issue, that it's going to be resolved. I think we're really putting city council in the position to make the eminent domain decision at the initial approval though. Uh, because otherwise we're, we're pushing that off automatically to cross the creek.
Maybe that could be leveraged to get to adjacent property owner to cough up.
Right.
We're gonna condemn it.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of giving the elevated stream crossing as an option.
Agreed, agreed.
I, I almost feel like any motion should not include that as an option.
I don't like the second one either.
The, the second one, you've seen them, they matter. It's a pipe that's at the very base of a creek and the water just kind of spills over it. It has a very. Yeah, it doesn't have as bad of a chance for creating a flash flood, a dam, if you will, and it doesn't have as much of a chance of breakage, I wouldn't think.
They work well.
Any, any staff input on that?
No, no, I'm not an expert in that regard. I'll just say that there has been those conversations between the city and the neighboring property owner.
Right.
The. Kind of uh. This easement, this greenway. Has really started to kind of take hold more recently. There's been. Uh, ongoing discussions and, and different property owners that are along this path. That are, are coming, just coming together. And so. These, these folks probably have no idea, may have no idea that there's, you know, the potential for a connection for them. Um, they may realize, I don't know, but there's. There's multiple things going on here that multiple moving parts that point towards a, a resolution. And um, we haven't had those conversations yet. So maybe it wouldn't come to. But the, the way the condition is written lays out, you know, and gives options and sets priorities, so.
So, and I'll just add to that with, um, you know, the good old fashioned reminder that everybody has to agree to a condition. And uh, the developers may have, uh, you know, perhaps a willingness to agree to it. If a timeline were not to exceed or if uh, we're getting close to a. Zoning permit or a CO or final site plan approval. Um, so they, like they mentioned, only got it on Friday. We wanted to make sure you all understood sort of what we were looking at. Condemnation can potentially take some time. Um, and their timeline may be faster or it may not be, you know, those, those things always can change too, so. Um, I would say we'll continue talking with them. Um, there are, from the perspective of the. You know, I'm not, I'm not the engineer either or the water sewer folks. Um, they've looked at all the options. They've laid out their preferences and I think if. We can get to one of the preferences higher on the list, then I don't, I, there's, Warren's not made any indication that they won't attempt to do that. They're, they just need to look at that. And a lot of this, I will, you know, a lot of this does occur more at the final site plan level when you're really getting into the. Details of manhole heights and things like that. Um, so uh. Uh, I, I think that if, if there's a, you know, a desire not to encourage one of the solutions, you certainly can. Can convey that.
Alright. We have a motion?
Just before that.
Go ahead.
Also being asked to decide this seventy-five feet up to two hundred feet.
You're talking about. They're asking for a condition where they don't have to meet that requirement of having the parking space.
Right, yeah, I think they've just requested relief from that. So you all do not necessarily need to add in a new distance. You can just.
Just that they get. They get the relief from the seventy-five foot requirement, which, which after was explained, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense anyway. You've got to.
Poor design. And I wasn't totally clear, sorry. The walking from those further out apartments to parking wherever it is is over. If you could go back to that slide. Alright, those up in the upper left, uh, how do they get to the park wherever?
So they would be parking on asphalt. They would be, they would be getting on concrete. They would walk on concrete and go to their.
Door. Sidewalks connected every event.
Yes, sir.
With, with lighting that only lights up the side.
No. Safe lighting.
Okay, any other questions before we?
Okay. I'll stand up here. Suggested motions for recommending approval. I move planning board recommend city council adopt an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville. Changing the zoning designation of the subject property pins nine five seven nine dash four eight dash two four one five and nine five seven nine dash. Four eight dash six eight three two, R forty low density residential and C two secondary business. To PRD planned residential development conditional zoning district. Based on the site plan and list of conditions submitted by and agreed to by the applicant dated eight eight, I don't know, when did you submit that? July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two, and presented at this meeting and subject to the following.
The list of conditions that was submitted by the applicant includes. A condition that they granted the aerial stream crossing as long as above the base flood elevation. So you would need to say except for that condition and then under, under. Number two. Uh, on the, if you're looking at the screen. Permitted uses and applicable conditions presented on the site and shall be amended to include and if you're intending to include the condition that we're.
You'll have to remind me, okay. Uh, and what was the date? July?
Twenty nine.
Okay. And presented this, uh, at this meeting and subject to the following. One, the development shall be consistent with the site plan. Including the list of applicable conditions contained therein and the following permitted uses. Where do you, where do you want me to put the except for? The end?
Uh, based on the site plan and list of conditions submitted by and agreed to by the applicant, except for.
Except for, okay. Permitted uses, permitted uses. One, two-family residential, two, single-family residential. Remember it, or. Permitted uses and applicable conditions presented on the site plan shall be amended to include or exclude. Uh, aerial sewer connection, right?
Yep.
And the other one was?
Just include the, uh, I referenced the condition read by staff.
And the condition and include the condition read by staff. Number three, the petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan. Based on the information from the staff analysis and because. Subject property is located in an area designated as a development opportunity and priority growth. Priority growth area according to the city's twenty thirty comprehensive plan. Furthermore, the regional activity center future land use designation recommends densities exceeding those proposed for this development. For furthermore, we find this petition to be reasonable and in public interest based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearings and because. One, the development of two family residential dwellings will provide a needed housing type. And two, the development would provide housing in close proximity to shopping and employment opportunities. Anything else?
I have a motion. Have a second, but we didn't mention the lighting.
Yeah, will you accept a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Um, of an additional condition. Um, as I have it hammered out here, within the, within the requirements. Of the Americans with Disabilities Act and pertinent safety regulations. Lighting shall be downward facing and fully shielded. Sidewalks away from the parking areas will use pedestrian height lighting. Uh, as negotiated with city staff. If that's agreeable with you.
With.
And with you.
With the addition of the amendment.
So we have another condition regarding lighting.
Lighting, that's.
And we removed the elevated stream crossing from a condition.
Yep.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
So on the lighting thing, I think we're, I think we're on the same path. I just don't know all those codes that you just read off.
Oh.
And this is brand new, our conversation. I may need a little bit of time to, to think through that, but then I want to go back to. As read by staff and the, the thing that was up, it had two conditions. The first one being the uh, extra planting. These are, these are not agreed to at this point.
I did not read that one. The one that was referenced was number two.
Okay.
The one you read was number two.
So number two is what we got on Friday and we said that we would continue to work with staff on. But we don't have it as a condition on the plans. It's not, it's not something that we would agree to at this moment. So making sure we're all.
Yeah, just to, to be clear. So what'll, what will come from planning board and what we ask planning board to do is to review and make the recommendation. And then when we go to city council, there'll be the clear list of what you all have agreed to. And then any discussion of those things that you have not, and then council reviews accordingly, so.
And then back to the lighting thing, if just because of my ignorance of the lighting, would, could we amend that to say something like I was able to work with staff? On the lighting? I, I don't know if I heard that in there. I heard some very specific code.
Yeah, I, well, I put in ADA, that's kind of a standard, uh, federal reg and pertinent safety regulations. Which city staff is uh, uh, up more on than anybody sitting up here. And then the yes.
If, correct me if I'm wrong.
Sure.
The, the way it's worded is to allow allowances to ensure that. Lighting is not gonna be reduced to a point where it's not safe.
Right.
Doesn't meet minimum standards, but in all other cases, it's gonna be designed in a way to prevent light.
Right, and I think the downward.
And they're very good.
Yeah, the downward facing and, you know, having a shield on a light so that it helps to not go across. I, I think we're okay with that. And just, I didn't want to get myself into a condition where all of a sudden I gotta have.